So fresh and so clean, clean.
Good evening, all. It is seven o'clock. I will call the Hamilton Select Board to order for Monday, March 20th, 2023, and we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Chair.
We have set for 7:05. We're going to start just a little bit early for a public hearing of the Hamilton Licensing Board, which is the select board. Public hearing, discussion, and vote on the application of Turnbuckle LLC, DBA Honeycomb at 248 Bay Road, Hamilton, Massachusetts, 01982, for a license for on-premise sale of beer and wine. And I believe we have Lauren here tonight, right?
She has.
Yeah.
They're together over there on the right. Hi, Lauren.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tyler Hensler from Upton, Canal, and Devlin on behalf of the applicant Turnbuckle LLC, which does business as The Honeycomb. With me tonight is the proprietors of the restaurant, Billy and Lauren Moran. The applicant is applying for a new Section 12 on-premise retail license at the same 248 Bay Road location where they currently operate. This would replace a Section 15 off-premise retail license, which they will turn in upon issuance of the on-premise one. Lauren is also the current manager of record, previously approved by this board, and she has run this business for six years now. As you are aware, Honeycomb is a very popular place. Everything sold is handmade, and they locally source as much as possible, and they enjoy a good reputation in Hamilton because of it. It is due to this popularity and customer demand that they are seeking an on-premise license here tonight. The Honeycomb is also deeply involved in the community. They volunteer to host local mothers and female entrepreneur clubs and are a staple destination for different kinds of showers and children's birthday parties. And The Honeycomb wishes to continue this tradition, and they hope to add to the ongoing efforts of this board and the community as a whole to revitalize the downtown area. But instead of selling regional beers and wine to carry out, we're responding to customer requests and demand for on-premise service instead. Also, in response to customer requests, they would like to extend the hours until 9:00 PM. Regarding specifics on seating, 28 total seats at all times per existing building department requirements. In the winter, that would mean, you know, all 28 seats would obviously be inside. But when the weather is nice, we take eight seats. We'd be taken from the inside, placed outside on the patio by the existing takeout window, European café style, leaving 20 inside, obviously. So The Honeycomb is simply seeking to continue to serve the community of Hamilton through their tested means of good food, local alcohol selection, and now additional on-premise options. Their new proposed menu features elegant wines and selection of craft beers to pair with their exceptional food menu created by trade chef Lauren. And I'd like to take a moment before I conclude with my brief presentation to thank Lori Wilson and the town manager's office. She was very helpful in accommodating and helping us put this application together. So with that, we're happy to take any questions, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren, you want to say anything before we discuss amongst ourselves?
Sure. I'd just like to add that very little is going to be changing if we are permitted this license. During our regular business hours, we're going to carry on the same service that we have for five and a half years, and we see this as more of an extension to add to the community and add some evening hours for the same type of food and adding some beers and wines to that. So not a whole lot of change, but we're just looking to expand our hours and add a bit more to the community.
Gotcha. Thank you. So no mimosas in the morning?
No. We, that's, we're not planning on adding any daytime beverages.
Gotcha.
So just to clarify, you'll still sell, even though you turn in the old license, you'll still sell wine like you do now? This is just adding it, or are you not selling wine anymore?
This is being able to serve it on premise.
You wouldn't be able to, you're not allowed to have both licenses. You can either sell it to take off premises, or you can serve it on premises. They're trading in their existing.
There will be no more wine sales at?
The plan would be to trade them in, yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you for clarifying.
Is there any other questions?
I can make a motion, and we can talk about it, but.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the license for on-premise sale of beer and wine for 248 Bay Road, Hamilton, Mass.
Okay. Second, I, Caroline. All right. Further discussion?
No, I welcome, I think, like they said, to continue to develop business in Hamilton, is what we've been looking for. So it adds another layer, another option. They're not changing much, so they have the parking, they have the facility, they have the infrastructure, they have the history of running a successful business there. So I really don't have any questions. I think it's a great opportunity, so.
I'll be the one kind of dissenter in the group, just with past. When they first came to us for the license of premise, off-premise sales or sales for, whatever it is, you can sell it, but you can't drink it on the premise. There was a lot of people in the neighborhood who didn't want the sale and consumption of alcohol on site, and that's why we limited the license to what it was when we first did it five or six years ago. And since then and as of late, we had a handful of citizen complaints about cars on Bay Road and people drinking at the premises after hours for mothers' club parties, et cetera. And their social media posts show a lot of people in the premise, probably overcapacity with full glasses of wine and other alcohol. So, you know, they've been saying it's been a tasting, which is about a one-ounce pour, which by looking at the pictures on social media, it's unless you're pouring multiple ounces in the same glass, they were overpouring their samples. And I know we have a neighbor here, if they want to come forward and say anything about the application for their liquor license tonight. Tess, do you want to say anything?
Thank you. Tess Leary, 209 Bay Road. I was actually wondering, so is the application for drinking onsite?
Correct.
Serving onsite? So I guess I would just say that I don't think that that's necessary. I don't think that that is what, when this was originally approved as a project, it certainly was not the intent that they conveyed. And I would also suggest, I believe that they actually haven't even fulfilled the original requirements of the agreement. There's no sidewalk in there for pedestrians. So I would just, I would like them to finish what they started, and then maybe, I mean, this has already been addressed once before, so I'm not really sure why they need to do it again. But I wasn't aware of any of the, what you just said going on, but, so I have no complaints about that. There is, it's very busy, very successful seemingly, but it started out as a bakery.
Right.
So, thank you.
How many years have you been in business?
Five and a half.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, not unusual for a company that's been in business five years, just trying to grow and change the business, and they're, I think, in the business they're allowed to change their business as they grow, and so, as long as they meet the requirements regulation. I mean, we have two other, we have, we have The Post and we have Weathervein, both in the same neighborhood, right? So do they, I think it's anything different than those two companies are doing.
Right. I guess my worry is about the traffic on Bay Road with the parking situation sometimes. And then I think the recent investigation, why are, I can't remember who did it, but.
Lieutenant Trepaner.
Lieutenant Trepaner, you know, they were saying it was a tasting or a sampling, as many places are allowed to do, but I think they were doing a little bit more than that. So, you know, if we do change the license, it allows us to regulate them a little bit more, because this is kind of a loophole that they were using, I feel, for the sampling, or we'll call it heavy pours for the sampling. Because I do know those mothers' clubs events, having a wife that was in the mothers' club, those events do get pretty raucous at times.
What is, what is the parking restrictions on Bay Road? Are there any, like, known parking restrictions on there? I'm just wondering if it's, are there signs of, like, posted signs of you're not supposed to park, or limited parking?
I don't think it's supposed to, you're supposed to park there. That's one of the things we're probably.
So regarding, specifically regarding parking, excuse me to interrupt, but allow, if I may, Lauren and Billy, we've actually spoken about this privately, and they have some, they've addressed that concern, that that's something we've thought about. And Lauren and Billy, if you guys want to address that with more specifics, I think this would be a good time.
Yeah, I'd love to. So the parking lot is shared, and during the day it does get quite full, because all the businesses are open, including ours. And with this change of license, we're hoping to add on the additional hours in the evening where there wouldn't be other businesses there. So I don't foresee a problem with the parking lot being as full during the evening hours.
And we have permission to use, there's a total of 28 spots, which we have permission to use for evening events.
There are actually 37. And specifically regarding the issues that have been raised tonight regarding the wine, you know, supposed wine tasting, I think Lauren and Billy have also spoken with me about that, so they could provide you with some specifics there as well. Guys, this would be a good time to bring.
Yeah, absolutely. We have hosted events, and in tandem with them done wine tastings. The most recent was the mothers' club. We, and I spoke to the officer who brought the complaint to me, and he said that everything that I did was legal. We served two-ounce pours. We also had three different non-alcoholic options that night, and several new members of the club that were pregnant, that were drinking non-alcoholic wine that we sourced locally. So certainly, there might have been glasses that had more than two ounces, but I was strict with my staff that we poured two ounces, and we didn't charge for the wine, which was another stipulation of the tasting. So I did take care and was, you know, you know, made sure that we were following the law in that respect.
Right, and.
And Lauren, you.
The Honeycomb is maybe different from your average, you know, off-premise Section 15 license with the elegant air, you know, eatery aspect of it, the restaurant aspect of it. That tasting would be, you know, at home in any, in any typical liquor store that you could walk into and then see someone, you know, offering free samples of wine, so.
And Lauren and Billy, you, you both have your tips training, if I'm looking correctly in the packet. Do you have other employees tips trained that will be working these events that you're planning on if this passes?
Yes. We would have, we would need to hire additional staff to execute these events, but we would require that they are tip certified.
Okay. So your license has, I think, what, 28 seats, 40, what do you, what do you, what would you say is going to be a max occupancy that you will permit in your, or typical, that you would, that you would say? Because you have 28 spots, and you have, what, 28 seats?
We weren't out, planning on changing the occupancy at this time. If this were to be approved, the occupancy would remain the same. Again, not, we're not looking to change anything, you know, in the day-to-day operations, other than offering, you know, on-premise options to pair with the food, which is delicious.
Is the, is the outdoor seating already a part of an approved plan, like seating plan?
No, I don't think it is.
Yeah. I do believe it is. Our, like, we are, when you're looking at the building, the front left small patio that we have is licensed currently.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as they don't increase the number of seats they have total that they're serving to.
Right. Well, because that's not on the plan, is it? Just indoor space?
The new one is, the new one includes.
Includes the outdoor, okay.
They show, whether it's only indoor, indoor and outdoor, it's still only 28 seats.
Right, right.
They basically take eight seats, put them outside, and take them out from the inside. So it's 28.
That's correct.
Okay.
Either way, maximum, inside and outside. You can't have more than 28.
And then to the earlier comment from one of your butters about the sidewalk, is there any plans to make good on the sidewalk?
Sorry, I'm not sure what.
I can answer that. So, Mr. Chairman, I am Jim Presser. I'm Lauren's dad.
Yeah, Jim, how you doing?
Good, good, good. So I'm the owner of the property. I'm dad and landlord. The sidewalk that was referred to, to my memory at least, was never a condition of the site plan approval for this property, because there were a number of people on the planning board that issued the site plan approval that thought it was a very bad idea to put a sidewalk in the middle of a driveway around a circular in and out that serves that property. So I could be mistaken, but I don't think so. There was never a condition of the site plan approval that a sidewalk had to be installed. It just, there was just nowhere to put it. And to clarify the seating, the reason there are 28 seats maximum on the property is because of the capacity of the septic system.
Right.
And there really is no demarcation between inside and outside in that respect. There's, we can have a total of 28 seats, whether they're inside or outside. In the warmer weather, a number of people sit outside on that patio. They have from day one, and.
Which you could do, but.
Of course, during COVID, there was no inside seating. Part of what's happening here, like, you're all aware, and lots of businesses, is Lauren and Bill are trying to respond to the new world we live in, and this seems like a sensible way to go about doing it. But 28 seats is, is all there will ever be on that property, regardless of where they are.
Right. Thank you, Jim. Tess, you had another comment?
Yeah, I would just like to say I strongly believe that it was, the sidewalk was a stipulation, and I believe it's supposed to go on the left of the driveway entrance. So it wouldn't be going across, it would be on the left, going up the side, to kind of to where the outdoor seating area is.
All right. We'll follow up on that with the planning board and see if it was part of the.
If I was on the planning board then?
Do you remember?
I don't recall it, but I could be wrong, so we should look it up.
I remember talking to the sidewalk, but I don't remember how it ended.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, we would, we'd love to, to, you know, be provided any sort of documentation that says, you know, that from the planning board or what have you, and would love to get an answer on that, the sidewalk issue.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we can pull that up from the archives. I mean, it's not hard to find, it's just.
Now, if they're doing outside seating, do we have to approve the alcohol for outside as well as the difference?
You can limit it to the footprint that they show, where they have the little patio and the tables.
Right.
And they're not allowed to, taken into the parking lot. You need to say that in the order.
Right, okay. Did everybody catch that?
They have two motions.
You can make it all in one motion.
You can wrap it in one.
You can approve it and allow for seasonal outdoor seating as defined only on the map.
I mean, there's two issues here, there's three issues, right? One is the, one is the, they abide by their site plan review, which I'd be surprised if they didn't, and they got this far. But I, so question, if we can condition it upon, if we want to get it approved tonight, we can condition it upon, I'd be okay, if we want to do it tonight, to vote tonight, to condition it upon.
Yeah.
The.
Hearing to the agreement of the site plan.
Hearing the site plan review, right. But, I, it would have been drawn to plan. You wouldn't, couldn't have, you couldn't have built a sidewalk if it wasn't drawn, because it would have had to been done by a civil engineer to make sure it actually worked, so.
And plus, there's the complication, is Bay Road the state road, too?
What would have been their private?
Do the curb cut and all that stuff when we did.
It would have been private property. It would have been over the septic system.
Right, would have been over the septic.
Yeah, so. But I have no problem conditioning it to, if they have no problem, I have no problem approving with the conditions they adhere to, the conditions of the site plan. If they believe it's not on there, then they're not at risk.
We, we would, we're amenable to that. Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm going to maybe ask you to change your motion a second, but just make sure we're all on the same page. So we are thinking about, and Bill may make a motion a second here, to grant the change in license with some stipulations that the alcohol outside is limited to the patio, if that's something we decide, and that the hours are extended, and that we also, the condition of the site plan conditions are all met. Was there anything else I'm missing?
I just would like to clarify, you made the mimosa comment, but we are saying that alcohol is served from open to close, right? So you will be serving alcohol, starting when? At 11?
Lauren can answer that.
We are not planning on serving alcohol until after the regular Honeycomb hours are closed, so after 2:30 PM. I don't, I'm not sure if the license we're given is.
Yeah, I think we just have to put it in there.
And we'll, we'll add that to the motion.
Yeah, I think we need to add that to the motion, but.
So let's talk about the outdoor.
On that topic, though, sorry to jump in, if we are doing, call it an event, a baby shower, or a wedding shower, whatever it may be, and for that particular event, though we wouldn't be open as Honeycomb, we'd be closed to the public, and we wanted to serve at 11:00 AM, we would ask that we are, that we have the right to do that, though we will not do it during the Honeycomb business hours. It will be for a separate, call it, private event.
What's, what's the reason to limit yourself? What's the reason not to just say we're going to serve alcohol when we're open?
Yeah, that would be my.
We don't want to limit ourselves in any way.
Right, so why, why do you want to limit yourself?
We also don't want to get, not this to pass because of that, so we're.
I actually find it more compromise.
We thought it would be a nice compromise for the board to see, you know, to show that we were not, we're not planning on partying till all nights of the, you know, to early morning, to, you know, all hours of the night, so.
I'm more worried about your closing time than I am about your opening time. Yeah. We're more worried about your closing time than your opening time. So if you close at nine, is what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Nine, was it nine, or 9:30?
It was nine.
Nine. And refresh my memory on the, the other businesses in the, in the little plaza there, Jim. When do they close?
11.
I guess.
11 is the.
Under, if I can weigh in one more time. My, my understanding is that a Section 12 license cannot be limited in terms of the hours of service, except on Election Day, and I believe on Christmas Day, under the statute. What Lauren and Bill are trying to tell you is, they don't have plans to be serving mimosas and cappuccinos on the patio at 11:00 in the morning. Their concept is not to do any of this, because there's preparation, obviously, involved in the food that they want to serve, and they don't plan on doing that until after the bakery closes at 2:30 in the afternoon. But we don't want to hem ourselves in and wind up back in front of you with a complaint that, you know, we're serving at noon time instead of 2:30, because I don't think the statute contemplates that.
I think, Jim, we, I think, Jim, we agree with you, which is why you shouldn't limit yourself in this situation. You should just.
I think local licensing authority has, has.
Yeah, we can limit it to whatever we want.
Hours on service of alcohol. So, the local, right. So I disagree. I think that the local licensing authority does have broad ability to limit hours for, for the service of alcohol.
But my, my question to you, Jim, was the other businesses in, I'm going to call it the plaza there, what time do they close in the evening? If, you know, Honeycomb's at 2:30, the other two or three businesses there, what time do they close up shop at the parking lot would be open for?
Oh, 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 I see. Got it, got it, got it.
Well, my, the, one of the buildings is mine, used to be my law office. That's now occupied by two lawyers and three architects, who work 7:30, 8:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon, roughly. But, and, and the other building is owned by Suzanne Sanger, who runs an interior design operation in pretty much the same hours. I think, more importantly, if you've been to Honeycomb, the busy hours are morning, somewhat less so during lunchtime, but by 2:00, 2:30, 3:00, the parking, there's, you have to understand, by your zoning, those three properties that share the parking lot require 27 spaces, nine spaces each. There's 37 or 38 altogether. My building is limited to nine. Suzanne's next door is limited to nine. In fact, some of my tenants, at my request, park off-site, as do many of Lauren's employees. So, yes, it's a busy parking lot. It's the, it's the price of success, I guess, that we have to pay. But by the time this service is going to be underway, the parking lot's wide open. There's very.
Right, and I guess I just.
There might be a dozen cars or so in that lot.
Yeah, and it's a tight lot. We all know that. And I guess one of my concerns is the, the parking on Bay Road, or people crossing over to the public safety building if they've parked over there after they've had a few drinks, et cetera. You know, you know, you're saying it's not going to be probably an issue after hours, but the tastings and mothers' clubs events, et cetera, that you've had, there have been after hours, and there's been, you know, 20 or 30 cars on Bay Road.
You know, it's.
The, the night that we had the mothers' club event, there was also an event at the community house. So I know that.
Yeah, you, you would find, I think, and it's, it's funny that you say this, because my wife and I drove past the bakery one late afternoon just a few days ago, and there were two cars parked on Bay Road in front of my building, in front of 252.
And some people just park on Bay Road when the parking lot's 72, so.
I don't know where they were, though, because the parking lot wasn't full. And as often as not, I, I think you'll find the cars that park on Bay Road, because they park in front of Suzanne's building, which is 264, those cars are at the community house, because I think the parking there is, is even tougher some days than, than what we deal with, but.
I guess my, my opinion on the, the parking, I mean, I understand that's a concern, parking on Bay Road, but I'm not sure it totally is on them for them parking on Bay Road. I mean, if someone's going to park unsafely on Bay Road somewhere, isn't that on the individual parking? I mean, I could just as easily park on the sidewalk and walk into the post if I couldn't find parking, and no one's going to blame the post, I think. You know, I think it needs to be enforced better. If we have concerns about parking on Bay Road, there should be signs there. We should talk to our public safety and say, enforce that. I don't think we should hold them accountable for someone parking on Bay Road, you know, unsafely.
Yeah, no, I mean, I hear what you're saying, Tom, but when you're adding more hours and et cetera, you're adding more opportunities for that to happen. I'm just kind of pointing it out. Mr. Bowler?
If I could, if I could just jump in real quick, while there are more hours, there physically cannot be more people than there already, that already currently exists there. So we're keeping it at 28, you know, and even if we could increase it, we would, we wouldn't, because 28 is, is, you know, a good number, and, and, you know, feel that it's manageable for us with the parking that exists there now.
All right, thank you, Tyler. Mr. Bowler?
Yeah, Bill Bowler with my zoning board of appeals hat on. It was actually the zoning board of appeals that issued the decision on site plan review, not the planning board.
Previous iteration, yeah.
And the decision, which was recorded, one of the findings of fact said, was a three-foot pedestrian walkway will be marked out on the outside of each driveway as shown on the final plans. It was not made a condition of the decision, so it's not enforceable as a, as a condition, but it was, that's, that was the finding of fact on the decision. So I have the decision here, if you want to.
I'd say that we would love to take a look at that. Anything that makes the community more amenable, we're open to, but we, we are just, you know, here for a liquor license. And, you know, if we wanted, you know, the zoning board of appeals could, or at any time, call this in, or could call us in in the future, but we are just here for the, the Section 12 on-premise consumption license here.
So Bill, if you can email that to Joe.
Bill, can you email that, Joe?
So I think, I think we got, so we got, it's unpacked, we got, we got, we've talked about a lot of things here, right?
A lot, a lot on the plate.
So four things, right. One is the, one is the liquor license, right, and what hours it is, right? So, once again, they're saying, they're. So, once again, they're saying, they're, they're eliminating it because they think it's gonna help them pass, but in my mind, it's more complicated, so I'd rather just do start and stop, open and close, right? Number two is outdoor seating, which I have, I compromise of maybe, neighbors haven't necessarily complained about the noise of the outdoor seating, but they've complained of other things, but, so the outdoor seating, and then there's the... There were four things to talk about, but...
Oh, we'd love to talk about the, we can address that right now, if it would help out at all. So right now, there exists a takeout window at that patio, which will remain open during the day, but, which would allow people to walk up to the patio for the COVID regulations that were adopted, you know, during the pandemic. It's an option that the consumers really like, and the customers have grown accustomed to. But again, when alcohol service begins after 2:30, that takeout window would be closed down, and the patio would be used for seating, and it would be roped off. Currently, as it exists right now, there are walls on three, or is it, is it hedges? On three sides, it is inaccessible, and the only way to get on there is through the fourth open side, which would be roped off when alcohol service begins. You could only access that patio from the inside. And again, it would be limited to eight seats, because we still want to have, keep enough seating on the inside for people. So I don't, I don't know, I don't think noise would be a problem, and it would not be, you would not be able to walk, you know, freely from off the patio to an unlicensed area. You could only access that patio from inside the Honeycomb indoor. And again, the takeout window would not be, there wouldn't be drinks being handed through the window or anything like that.
And just, while Tyler's finishing up there about the only access to the patio from inside the building, if there's anyone online that would wish to make a comment, you can raise your hand, and we'll, we'll address you. If you're not in person, feel free to comment.
So I got, I got the four things here.
Okay.
One was the hours.
Yep.
Two was just the liquor license itself. Three was the outdoor aspect of it, and four was this quote-unquote sidewalk.
Okay.
So I think we answered the sidewalk, that is not enforceable, but if they can demarcate a walking lane, that would be appreciated, I believe, by the neighbors and by the zoning board.
What was the three again?
Hours.
Hours, liquor license.
This is the typical, and then the outdoor seating. So we, I think sidewalk, we've resolved. Liquor license, I think we've resolved. Now we just have to resolve hours, if there's a reason to limit it. It should just be the hours are open.
We're amenable to...
You're talking not just the extension of the hours, but the...
If that's, if that's what you propose, just to make it simpler on the license, just, you know, from the maximum amount of hours, and, you know, we make our own opening hours, that would be amenable to us.
And then the outdoor seating.
Yeah. So is anybody opposed to them extending hours till 9:00?
No.
Okay. Anybody opposed to the outdoor seating that is only accessible from inside the building, that will be portioned off after...
And what did they say, limited to eight seats?
Eight seats.
We gotta break there.
Okay.
Sorry, I'd like to go back to that. If we, if it's a beautiful day, and we have a, you know, somebody from inside wants to sit outside, and it makes 10 seats outside and 18 inside, I don't want to be bound to the exact amount of seats. There's plenty of room in that patio.
It's part of the statute, you have to be, have a seating plan, people have to be seating outside, so it's part of the regulation.
I've seen frequently where I've gone to a restaurant and wanted to sit outside, and all the tables were full, so I had to either sit inside or wait, so that's just part of doing business as a restaurant. If you want outdoor seating for alcohol service, the select board has the right to say how many seats it can be.
Okay.
Yeah, didn't we have this when they put the temporary stuff up at 15? They had to tell us...
Same exact thing.
Exactly how many seats they were taking from inside to outside, and it was fixed. We couldn't change it after that.
Yeah.
So can we...
Can we submit a plan?
With 10?
For a higher number, for 10 or 12 seats, because there is space for it?
You'd need to reapply.
You'd need to re-advertise the public hearing, because it was advertised with the, this packet was available for anybody that wanted to see it for the last two weeks to look at. The plan was part of the packet.
But does it say in here, 10 versus 20?
I believe it says.
Yeah.
Or 8 versus 1?
It says 8, yeah. Unfortunately, it's very specific with the liquor license.
So we can keep it at 8 for now, and if down the road, we, we show that we're able to do this successfully and not disturb anyone, we can come back to you and ask for more seats?
That's correct.
Yep. You're shifting inside.
I would say no. That's my first lip in. They can, but we can say no.
Yes, right, we could say no. They can come back, but we can say no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other, other comments, questions? Were you starting to say something, Tom?
That was in line with my question about whether there could be, in addition to the eight, whether they could have additional folks out on the patio.
Yeah, no.
Not the way it reads, no.
No, it's not the way that application is.
So that answered it.
All right, seeing no further questions or discussion, does anybody want to make a motion? Or make a new motion?
All right, I'll make a, a motion to approve the liquor, sorry, license for on-premises sale of beer and wine for 248 Bay Road with the following conditions, that outdoor seating is limited to eight people, the hours of operation of liquor service will be from the hours of operation of the, of the, of the restaurant from morning till, till 9:00 o'clock at night.
Second.
Okay, now, any further discussion on that, or questions? Okay, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Guess what I'll close it with, is saying it passed, but what I'll close is that, obviously, the neighbors would appreciate a...
Some due diligence on the sidewalk.
Pedestrian way. And then, obviously, we're gonna talk to our public safety about enforcing the 40 premises, 40 people premises on-site, and the parking situation.
Yeah.
28.
28.
No, 40, the max occupancy is 40.
Next up, 28 seats.
40 people.
For max occupancy, right.
Right.
Standing room, et cetera, seats.
Max occupancy size is 40 people.
Does that mean outside?
That 40 people include staff.
It does include staff, okay.
40 people include staff.
40 people with staff, okay.
That was, so test question was, does that mean eight people can be seated outside, but five others can be standing?
That was part of the condition, yes, eight people outside.
Just eight people outside.
That was part of the condition of the...
Not outside, no.
That does not include staff, though, correct?
It does include the staff.
The eight does not include staff.
No, the eight does not include staff.
The eight outside does not include staff.
The 40 does.
The 40 total does.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, just to clarify.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Lauren and Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, congratulations, good luck.
Thanks very much.
All right, let me get back to my agenda here. Do we need to close the hearing?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close a public hearing for an application of Term Buckle LLC DBA Honeycomb at 248 Bay Road for a license for on-premise sale of beer and wine.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you. All right, now, back to our regular scheduled meeting. We have a handful of openings on some boards and committees. We have a historic district commission, we have two openings, one for a board of Realtor, and one for an at-large member. Our conservation commission has one opening. Our human rights commission has one opening for the housing authority, or from the housing authority. Our Hamilton Environmental Impact Committee, HEIC, has one opening, and our council on aging has one associate member opening. So if you're interested, please go to the website, fill out a volunteer application, and join us. And now we have three minutes for any public comment for any topics not on the agenda. If you're online, please raise your hand, and we'll get to you. If you're in person, come up to the microphone, don't be shy. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our select board and town manager reports. Anybody have anything to add tonight?
Just a shout out that Wednesday at 7:30 is Tom and I's wine and warrant. For anyone who would like to join us to talk through the warrant, and I've got a lot of questions about this. Our job during that time is not to convince anyone to vote one way or the other. It is to talk through the warrant articles, the opinions that have been put forth by the FENCOM and the select board, and what's being voted on. It is a nonpartisan discussion. That's all I have.
Perfect. Anybody else have anything?
Isn't that online?
It's on Zoom, yep. It's also BYOB.
To your own house.
Yeah, to your own.
Your own Zoom screen.
Pajamas welcome.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything to add?
Just a quick comment, we had, last week, we had a really good meeting with the conservation commission, going over the bylaw, got some good turnout, some good questions. I believe it was recorded and should be posted, so if you didn't get a chance to see that, check it out. It is, some good questions were answered on, on the bylaw. That's gonna be going to town meeting in April, so feel free to check that out.
And when is the conservation commission meeting? When are they meeting? This week, right?
Meeting Wednesday?
I think it's Wednesday, yeah.
They usually meet on Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday night, I think.
Yeah, I think it's Wednesday.
All right, anything else? Anything from the town manager report this week?
No, I'm gonna put off making anything to just introduce, with great pleasure, I want to introduce Wendy Markowitz, who is our new finance director. Wendy is joining us online, and we'll let her say a few words and let the board ask some questions, but she began with us last Monday, the 13th, and she's trying to get up to speed as quickly as she can.
Hi Wendy, you've got it all figured out already, I'm sure?
Oh, absolutely, yes, thank you. Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm just so thrilled to be part of this amazing team and such a high-regarded community, so thank you for this opportunity, and I will not let you down, trust me.
I like that. Yeah, well, thank you very much for joining us tonight, we appreciate it, and I'm sure I'll talk to you many times in the future.
Great, looking forward to it.
All right, and then up next, we have our wonderful town clerk, Corinne Cale, to report on some upcoming town elections.
Thanks, Corinne Cale, Tom Clark. Just wanted to remind people, there are four key dates over the next couple of weeks. I think we've been all paying a lot of attention to the town meeting itself, Saturday, April 1st, 9:00 at the regional high school auditorium, and then on Thursday, April 6th, the town election from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., same place, Rec Center Gymnasium. And the last day to register to vote for either and both of those is this Wednesday, March 22nd, at 5:00 p.m. So if there's anybody new to town listening, and they haven't yet registered, you got a few more days to do that. And due to the Votes Act that passed last year, we are having vote by mail for this local election, so it's what's referred to as no excuse, so if someone just wants to be sure that their vote at the election will be counted, they can vote for, by mail as well. We have not had very many applications for vote by mail, four, to be exact, so I don't know what, what that means going forward, but folks can request a vote by mail up until Thursday, March 30th, at 5:00 p.m., so that'll be the last time to request it. So the ballots have arrived, sample ballot is posted on the town clerk's webpage, so folks can take a look at it there, and there's a couple of them posted around town as well. So those kind of the main, as I said, the four key dates, because I think people sometimes forget there is a last day to register and a last day to request vote by mail.
All right.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, the town warrant is due back from the printer this week, and is, we're planning to mail it out on Thursday, so folks should see it in their mail, hopefully by Friday or Saturday at the latest.
Great.
Is there a digital copy available online yet?
Yep.
Yes, it's on the website.
It's all on the website. Any other questions?
Jamie, did you have something?
So are there, so I seem to remember, right, you send out postcards if people wanted to request a mailing ballot. That didn't happen.
Nope, that's only for state elections. Good recollection, yep, the state, the state will be doing that. Next January of 2024, on January 20th, they'll be mailing them out. So to the extent people then check off all elections, which will mean for the March 5th presidential primary, as well as our local election, it would all be covered with that card. But for local elections, no, we are not obligated to do that. People have to take their own initiative to do it. Good question. Anyone else? All good?
No, all good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. All right, we have a couple items on the consent agenda. We have approve request for Little League banners at Patton Park, and there's information on that in your packet, and Sean Timmons is here as well, in case we have any questions. I think Little League, or he sent it from Little League. And then we also have to approve youth football request for banner on the tennis court's fence, and that one was a request for two months? But we, we had discussed maybe limiting the two months to something other at our discretion, because I think we have a, correct me, Jamie, it's two weeks or something like that?
What the policy says.
That's what the policy says. So, do we want to leave these on the consent and request as made? Or do we want to talk about them quickly and individually?
I'd love to talk about it.
Oh, I love it, I love it, Bill, I love it. All right, so we'll, we'll first...
Sean wasn't here last week, so I'd like to get his...
Yeah, so let's talk about the Little League banners first, and that's in your packet. I don't know what page it is, but there's some lovely photos in there.
It's a bunch of pages, 48, 49, 50. So I guess my question for Sean is, like I said, I was in, I was in favor in concept, because it's a good fundraiser, they support, it's sort of a give-back, they give back, investing in the fields. But we're kind of, we're looking for like a quantity, though, and so it's sort of, you know, there's two fields, there's two sets of fences. I kind of wanted to limit it, but I'm not sure that it really, it seems like you could put up as many as you could sell, so...
Right.
Sean, what's the thought of limiting it, so it sort of makes it special, and doesn't make it too much?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, and I actually talked to Lou just about an hour ago, so I know, I know their, you know, their intention is to not, you know, cover it, you know, ground to top with banners, so I think something done in a respectful and tasteful way, you know, they're certainly on board with. But, but you are right, I, you know, out of all the, you know, all of our youth organizations do the best they can, but I will say, you know, with Little League, with their fundraising, with their energy, you know, when, when they mention that they've put close to $200,000 back into the fields, you know, they're not lying, so, you know, these, these are really important tools for them to be able to fundraise, which really directly goes back into the playing fields, or just really the experience for the kids.
But it isn't the problem that if we don't, we don't have a specific request from them, like you can limit it this way, we would just be making it up, and that's gonna not be very feasible, practical for them, right?
I think it wanted to take, I think it's a first one-year trial, I mean, we could limit and say, I mean, I kind of counted what they had at Cheeseman, I mean, somewhere between 20 and 30 kind of makes sense, so the question, we could just limit it to come up with a number.
So, Bill, sorry, so it wouldn't be that many, so remember, Cheeseman has a permanent back fence, home run fence? So they hang a lot of banners on the home run fence, as well as the backstop. We know Patton, on the large diamond or the small diamond, does not have that permanent fence, so they would not be going up on the home run fence, so it'd be a lot less than, than what's at Cheeseman.
If I interrupt you for just a second, if you look at page 49 in the packet, Bill, you can see that's, that's the Patton Park diamond, and you can see a couple on the fence there, and I think when they were here last, and they were talking about not going all along the fence, right?
Because it blocks the view.
Because it blocks the view, because there's the bleachers there, so, and it looks like one right in front of the dugout, one kind of next to it, and then the next, page 50 in the packet, you've got the Iron Tree and Mastronzy, et cetera, over to the backstop. So, I mean, it looks like they could only probably have, this is one...
Six or eight. But this is one, there's another diamond too, though, right? You're doing that both, or just this one?
I think it's just the one.
Just this one?
I think it's just the one, because there's no...
I think he said less than 10 at the, at the last meeting.
So I would have five, you would be fine, Sean, if we said, we have to limit it with something, you say 10 or less, you'd be fine?
I think that, yeah, I think they'd be more than happy with that as well. I don't think they were planning on doing any more than that anyways.
Okay, let's say, let's say 10. If I make a motion to approve 10 3x6 banners on the fences at the Patton Park Little League Diamond for 2023, and we'd like to revisit it in 2024.
Yeah, can I, can I ask you maybe to amend your size a little bit? If you look at page 50, you've got a long one on the backstop there, so you could say maybe within fitting on the backstop fence or something, you know what I mean? So it's...
Not larger than 3x10. Not larger than three by 10. So 10 banners, none larger than three by 10.
Okay.
For the 23 season only, I think it's important for us as well, developing our policy to.
Yeah, and see what happens.
See what happens, right?
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Yep. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. All right. And then the next one was the youth football request for banner on the tennis court's fence.
So this is just to promote signups?
Yes.
Yeah.
In that place where the Stop Elder Abuse one used to be?
Yes.
Like that one spot is kind of the like, if you need a banner spot?
Well, we've, I mean, we've had multiple up there at different times. The conserve water one goes up there at some point, usually at Tim's.
We used to have a voting one that went up there, but I think it got destroyed over the years.
So what, what, what happened to the banner location where Winthrop School is right there? This banner would have typically gone there and that little two-by-four erect, you know what I'm talking about?
It's there, it's just empty.
Nobody uses it?
People, they use it once in a while, but not too often. It's right on the edge of the driveway. In fact, I drove by it today and it was, it was empty. I think they had the, is the plant sale in front of the COA?
Plant sale was in there, yeah.
The plant sale was in there the other day.
I remind you again, Generals, Hamilton Wyndham Youth Football in Chilene, that is a town-sponsored, school-sponsored? What exactly, how, is it a separate organization? How's it working?
Nah, it's town, it's, it's a nonprofit, so same as Little League, youth soccer. You know, they're all, they're all, those are all similar. So this is a town-run, town-run program.
So it goes through your, it goes through your office?
The permitting goes through my office, correct?
And the, I'm going to say kind of the example of the sign is on page 53.
How big is that sign?
It doesn't say.
Three by 10.
See?
I think they were asked for three by 10.
The email says three by 10.
I thought that was for the one over the backstop, sorry.
No, two different, yeah, two different, two different requests.
Oh, I see it now, sorry, I missed it before.
Yeah. Yeah, so this one would just be a sign that basically, you know, would announce registration is open for tackle football with the, with the website. You know, it's, we've had similar ones up there in the past.
Yeah. I worry about the two months.
Yeah, I mean, they're willing, you know, I, I, I think they just use sort of two months as a, as a, an idea, but I know that they'd be happy with any time at all, to be honest with you. I talked to, talked to them earlier or late last week. So, you know, any time that you feel is, you know, that you feel is reasonable, they'll be happy, they'd be happy with it.
Yeah. I mean, I think that two months is a longer time and it just becomes kind of noise. People don't pay attention to it after a little while if it's just sitting there.
How about three by six for four weeks? Three by 10 is a big sign.
That's a big sign, yeah.
There's never been a sign bear that big, I don't think.
I think that when we had the, Corinne, when legal women voters used to put the get out the vote stuff up there, that was a big sign though, right? And the water ban one's pretty big?
The water ban's big.
Water ban one's pretty big. And that's probably a three by 10.
That is a public safety message.
But yeah. But I'm just saying, it's a size comparison. I don't know, what do you guys think about the bill's proposal on the size and the duration?
Sounds good.
Costs them less money too.
Was that a motion, Bill?
A motion to approve the.
I think that was a motion, yeah.
I make a motion to approve the Hamilton Wyndham Youth Football Chilene sign on the Patton Park Tennis Courts for a max size of three by six or a max time duration of four weeks.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
Sean, that be okay?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see that really being an issue. I can, I will, you know, I'll send an email out as early as tonight to them to let, to let them know what the decision was.
I don't want them, I don't want them to remake a sign if they already made it. Have they made, have they made the sign yet or not?
I'm not sure. I mean, I can find that out. I'm not, typically I tell people, do not order them or do anything until the final, you know, until you get the final okay. So I don't, that was my advice to them, but I'm not sure what they actually went ahead and did or did not do.
Okay, let's hope they haven't made it yet. I guess get back to us if they have and we'll.
Okay.
We'll revisit it.
So we'll vote on that, okay.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Ayes have it. All right. Next up, I think we have Vicki, if I'm right.
Vicki, for, there's two items for the Energy Manager. One is amendment to the Shebaco Road Solar LLC PPA and lease agreement. And the other, then after that, there's.
Charging stations.
Charging stations.
Okay.
Hi Vicki.
Hi Vicki, whichever one you want to start with, we'll, we'll take it up.
All right. Good evening. Good to see you all. We can start with solar, I think that's first on your agenda.
Yep.
So we have an amendment, number two, to our solar agreement for the landfill project. And essentially this, the function of this amendment is to kind of reset the contract start date because originally the, the system actually went on, online in December of 2021.
Right.
But National Grid didn't do what they needed to do and give AMRESCO permission to operate until sometime in May. So our original contract has that December date as the start date, so they were generating, but we weren't getting credits yet until May. So this amendment two moves this contract start date to May to coincide with National Grid's permission to operate date. So it's a six, five-month shift in the start date of the 20-year PPA.
Right. And in our packets, it starts at page 55 and everything's highlighted in red, all the updates.
Yes. Yeah. And council, council did the updates. Well, actually, I should say, AMRES, or it's actually been sold to Greenbacker now.
Right.
Proposed amendment two, we had Matt Fair at KP Law Reviewing, and those are his red lines. And I haven't heard yet from Greenbacker, but I'm presuming that they'll accept the red lines. I mean, if we sign, they're going to have to take it, so.
Right. All right. Does anybody want to make a motion? And then we can have some questions if there are any.
I move that we approve the second amendment to the solar power purchase agreement and lease agreement.
All right. Second by Caroline. Any further discussion? No, fairly straightforward stuff, just housekeeping, really. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
All right, next.
The next one is the charging stations. You all have noticed, we have two new DC Fast chargers at Patton Park, grant-funded. And those are in addition to the two Level Two chargers that have been at Town Hall for a couple of years now, 2020, I think those went online. So so far, we have in charge for the Level Twos and the DC Fasts aren't online yet. So, but there's obviously operating and maintenance costs to the stations. So I attempted to quantify those costs for the Level Twos, which are known because they've been online for two years, and then try to estimate what the DC Fasts are going to cost going forward and made an effort to create a fee structure so that at the end of the day, it's a budget-neutral endeavor. So I wrote up a memo, I'm sure it's in your packet there with what it's costing us for these stations for quarterly maintenance and obviously we have to buy the electricity. There's a networking charge every year because these are, all have to be connected so that you can look on your app and find a charging station and that's all requirement, there's networking fees. And so my proposal on the second page is to charge per kilowatt hour, basically what we're paying per kilowatt hour. It's a pass-through on the electricity cost, which is about 21 cents a kilowatt hour. And then I propose a dollar parking fee per hour at Town Hall and $2 per hour at the DC Fasts. And that fee would cover what I was talking about as far as the maintenance and the networking and other costs.
And so that's on page 68 and 69 in the packets.
Oh, sorry.
Look, and that's okay, you didn't know, Vicki.
So how do you, I get how you pay for the charger, how do you pay for the parking?
It'll be charged a minute.
It's charged right through the whole thing.
The whole thing will go right through the, the little app and it'll, it'll start with the charge for the parking and then it'll charge for the electricity as it gets used.
Can't we just increase the kilowatt hour and just make it simple?
We can, but I just want it to be as transparent as possible. You know, we're a town entity, I didn't want to be charging 50 cents per kilowatt hour when they're saying, I know they're not paying 50 cents per kilowatt hour. I mean, we can, but just in an effort to be transparent about, about what the costs are, I split it out.
When you're talking like four cents, it's going to go from 21 cents to like 24, 25 cents. It's not a huge difference. But I don't know. My opinion, just to make it simple and just increase the kilowatt.
Yeah, I mean, the other, the other piece is you don't want people sitting in these parking spaces for a whole day. So the parking fee per hour kind of gets them to move their car.
Like it's separate, I think.
That, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
You don't know how lazy electric parkers are if you think $8 is going to stop us from sitting in a spot.
For eight hours, yeah. Being an electric car owner, yeah.
Oh, can I speak?
Is there a, is there, so we have to make signage up that sort of says these things on it?
It's all through the app. You know, I'm not an EV driver, but it's all through the app and you can look where the free stations, what do they charge? It's all built into this app. Maybe Caroline can elaborate more.
Caroline has no idea.
She has no idea. You charge at home.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
I don't, I don't, I just plug them in. I don't ever look at it.
Question?
I, I mean, I have partial electric car and it's in and it, it's the app, I'm, there could be different apps, but the one I use, which is ChargePoint, which is whatever, it's not really all that user-friendly frankly, about figuring out which, what each thing charges, but anyway.
But it's here, neither nor there, right? Virginia, did you have a comment? I see your hand up.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
I know that the Conservation Commission's coordinator has an electric car, so I've seen his car out there some time. And I totally agree with you, charge for electricity, but I'd hate to call it a parking fee because as far as I know, we have never charged anyone to park in a regular parking lot, even all the employees. What if some of the other employees have electric cars and they park there? Is that going to create a problem?
I think that's a great idea, Virginia. We're going to start charging everyone for parking. Maybe not what you were saying, Virginia. Kid, I kid.
I think the point is these are special, very limited spots.
Right.
They're also taking up, by having the charging stations there, we're losing two parking spots. So we don't want them to be used as parking spots, we want them to be used as charging stations. So if people are parking there, they should be parking there to.
You're paying a premium for the space, right?
And you're paying for the right to use that.
Right. So but let me put this out there. If it's only on the app and someone parks there for four hours, but they only charge for an hour, they're only going to pay for one hour of parking.
Vicki, does it, does it, if you charge for four hours, will it charge you?
Oh, if you park for four hours, they'll only charge for an hour.
So go and unplug your car, in other words, after an hour?
If you have to plug your car, it wouldn't know you were there.
Right, so.
Right.
So you're saying like.
Yes, what if someone just parks there and doesn't plug in, just parks there for six hours?
That's reassign, it says.
Well, we could put a sign up.
Sign that says, you know, four, to whatever it is. How long does it take to charge a car?
We could, we could put a sign up that said that these, these spaces are reserved for people who are charging their cars, all other vehicles will be removed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that.
There are, they already are already marked, I think, as EV only.
Yeah.
That was a stipulation of the grant, so.
Yeah.
But we had forced, I mean, we had forced that as well, so.
And as far as an employee, if, you know, we can always set up the stations to have a workplace, a workplace number, where if you're an employee, you don't have to pay for charging. I mean, people do all kinds of stuff. These stations have tons of functionality.
Wouldn't necessarily endorse that. If my employee wants to park all day while he's parked there, they can pay like everybody else.
Not endorsing that idea?
No, I understand that.
Move that we approve the proposed fee structure.
Yeah, I think that's a great, great plan.
Second.
Second. All right. Anyone else have any discussion or question? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you, Vicki, very much for both of these things.
When will they be online?
You're welcome, they're going to be on, I think, Monday.
Oh, great.
And that'll, and that'll be for the two behind Town Hall right away as well, right? That'll all get worked out?
Yeah, I just have to sit with Peggy and yeah, I think Monday will do everything.
That's great.
Okay, great.
That's great.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And now we have review amended plan for Town Hall renovations and code compliance with LLB Architects, Mr. Tim Olson, our Public Works Director, is here with us tonight.
As is Drayton Fair.
As is Drayton Fair. Hey, Drayton. Tim, you or Drayton want to pick it up?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Tim Olson, DPW Director. Drayton is going to have a presentation for you. Uh, I think we're going on year three or four of this project. You know, over time, we've been able to pare the project down, redefine the scope to a number that we feel is achievable, hopefully, at a town meeting. And Drayton will go over the details of what we removed from the original project and how we plan to restructure the bid. Hopefully pending a, a positive vote at a town meeting in the future. So he, he has a presentation. He has actually some numbers and an estimate to show as well. So I'll turn it over to Drayton right now.
Thanks, Tim, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and, and Select Board. If somebody could make me a host.
Just it. You should be all set now, Drayton.
We're all set now, Drayton.
Okay. So, everyone can see my screen?
Yes.
As, as Tim said, we've all been working on this for, for quite some time and I had spoken with Tim and some representatives, Joe and some representatives of the, of the town regarding what potentially could you do for money that you may already have or that you may be able to raise? Based upon the last project. So I know that in your packet you have, I think, the entire updated estimate as well as a summary sheet that I put together. But with your permission, I can go through this fairly quickly, hopefully graphically. It helps to, for you to understand exactly sort of what is in and what is out.
Yeah, please do.
Sure. So um, sort of working backwards, I guess, from the full original project. The full original project was, as you may recall, to completely renovate the, the Town Hall. Expand the parking into the DPW lot. Reorganize, renovate and reorganize the interior of the Town Hall. Mainly to remove the offices from the upstairs former meeting room. Because up there, the offices were just with open office partitions and the, regularly the shape and the architecture of the meeting room. Made it so that the acoustics were painfully bad in there, that there was virtually no privacy. The building hasn't been renovated in, in quite some time, fully renovated in quite some time. I won't go into all of the details that we went into before, but structurally, it's, it needs some reinforcing. And it has some pretty significant delayed maintenance that the town would like to take care of, including the cupola. But the way we approached this was what were the sort of the main priorities of, of getting, of bringing this building to a safer occupancy? And in our discussions, we came up with the fact that it doesn't have any kind of sprinkler system or fire protection system. And the fact that it is not readily accessible except for a temporary ramp to the first floor, the second floor and the basement are completely inaccessible. So those are the two sort of main drivers of the, of the project. Now, along with that, there are a number of different items that you just really can't, you can't do one without the other. It's, it's, it, there, there are a number of dependencies in, in, in any building project. But in, in this particular project, you really, well, we'll take a look. There are a number of things that you should, you just really can't do without the, the first one being, you know, you want to make the building tight. You want to reinforce the exterior envelope of the building. There's no point in doing renovations if the roof is bad. So frankly, reinforcing, and frankly, the structural reinforcing of the building is, is, is critical too. You don't want to do major renovations or, or even add a sprinkler system, which is significant cost, without making, ensure that the building is structurally reinforced. So the big numbers that you see on the left-hand side are really just sort of my priorities and they can certainly change my suggested priorities. But reinforcing the building structure, taking care of the exterior envelope, which includes the roof, the cupola, the repairing and repainting the exterior of the building. And then adding the sprinkler system, building the addition, which had the, the elevator and a new egress stair in it. That solves the accessibility issues. And then we started to take a look at some other options. Renovating the existing toilet restrooms on both the basement level, the main floor level. And then looking at adding two new restrooms on the second floor. The cramped and loud offices, really sort of taking those offices out of that main meeting room. Now, Tim has talked about some departments that have already relocated and some accommodations that the town may make. We haven't gotten into that as of yet, but that's the, that's the, that's the intent. And then next is to restore the, the Town Meeting Room on the second floor. The items with the dashes are just things that, sort of partial things that, that, that happen along the way, if you will. So building code compliance is improved. It is not fully compliant. And that's not the intent of the project, is to make the building code completely, to make the building completely code compliant. Limited green initiatives. When redoing the roof, the plan is to add additional insulation on the roof, or the last project. But this is the, this is the real key to the project. The most expensive items on the original project were the renovated HVAC, heating, air conditioning, and ventilating system. As well as the entire new electrical system. So if you take those two main pieces of the project out, most of the rest of the project becomes within a budget. What that means is, is that you can't renovate the interior the way the original project showed it. In that you can't build new offices with walls that go all the way up to the ceiling. Create new spaces that require new HVAC supply and return soon. Which, because that, that, that means a whole new system has to be, has to be installed and, and, and added. So it's the HVAC, the big chunk which is the HVAC and the big chunk which is the entire new electric system and lighting system. So those are the, and, and what that means is that you can't really modify the interior walls or spaces much more than the existing building. So limited parking, we'll take a look at some site plans as to how we were proposing to do this. The outdated infrastructure, one thing that we do have to do in order to power the elevator is to upgrade the electric service. So upgrading the, the amount of power that comes to the building so that it can handle the, the elevator. At least prepares the building in the future for thorough electric upgrades. And then repairing the HVAC, repairing the, the existing system, which is relatively piecemeal, but, but repairing, making the, any necessary repairs so that the building can continue to function that way. And then one thing that was, that was taken out of the project was the, the Town Vault, which had been scheduled to be a modular vault. It was scheduled to be constructed in the basement. So again, sort of looking at the building from the exterior, it would be completely renovated from the exterior. On the interior, it's just a diagram of showing you, just, just emphasizing that the, the, the new elevator can be, and stair addition can be built, the parking can be reconfigured. Building the new ramp that goes up to the existing, I believe it is, north door of the building. But on the interior, the walls that are there really remain the same. So the memorial room, whether or not it gets divided up with office partitions, open office partitions. That's, that's potentially down the road, but the, but the exterior, the back stairs get removed. That gets opened up, so the memorial room gets a little bit bigger. But all of the other existing walls remain. The existing toilets remain, they get renovated. Looking at the basement, the basement, again, an opening where the new addition will, will enter the building. But for the most part, the existing basement remains the same. The restrooms on the lower level are in the budget to get renovated. The second level, again, all of the existing levels remain the same. The memorial room gets enlarged. There is no additional offices being built in this plan in the memorial room. It's, it's just one, the one big room. But adding potentially two new restrooms up on this level. Because this, this level doesn't have any restrooms at all. So this was the original full site plan. So what the project proposes is to really limit the amount of work to the immediate Town Hall site itself. Now, when we do the addition, it just makes sense to redo the parking. Redoing the parking and building the addition sort of interferes with your septic system to a certain extent. So again, it just makes sense to include a complete new septic system as, as was proposed in the original project. So, so it's an entirely new rebuilt septic system. It's not, it's not a new type of septic system, but the original project just rebuilt the existing one, replaced the, the tanks and the, and the leach field. But not do new, new, new sight lighting. Modify the, modify the pavement just so much as to be able to get in and out the way it was planned. Just modify the existing chain link fence in the back to sort of kick it out here because there's a couple of trees that are donated for, for these two areas. But not extend pavement into the DPW or a fence into the DPW yard. You'll see that adding a, a whole building generator is an alternate. Not building the fence between the, between the Town Hall and the neighbor. But for the most part, the site gets redone. We had redesigned the site drainage as part of the original building and, and, and this would take that and keep it on that immediate site. So not extend site drainage into the DPW yard as we had before, but just keep it to that immediate site. No new landscaping, basically just lawn and seed, but keeping as much of the original landscaping as possible. And this, you know, for all intents and purposes, this is, this would, is what the building would appear, which is what the, the last project was. So now, looking at the estimate, again, the low bid, and if I'm remembering correctly, the low bid of the project came in at 5.8 construction costs. And the budget that we've been working with is a little bit more than that, but not much more than that in terms of a total project cost. So based upon the estimate that you have in front of, that, that's part of your packet, that PM and C put together and that we worked on based upon these plans. All of these items have, have a cost associated with them, which are, which are listed here. A couple of things that, that we looked at to add as we went along, was making sure that the cupola was in there. Making sure that we reinforced the plaster ceiling on the second floor. An alternate to add the acoustic treatment on that existing plaster ceiling. Waterproofing the basement wall under the entry, under that north entry. That is really the only location where reportedly there's a, a, a more regular concern with water infiltration. And we would be building that new ramp and rebuilding that existing north portion of the building where it's been rotted. So now would be the time to at least waterproof that basement wall while that is going on. The site improvements, including a new septic system, new storm drainage, water service, electrical utilities, and alternate for, for a whole building generator. Renovate the existing lower level toilets, renovate the main level toilets, add new toilets on the upper level. Looking at refinishing the floor of the meeting room on the upper level. Looking at potentially refinishing the floors throughout building. Now, a couple of these we've talked about fairly recently and were not included in the estimate that you have in front of you. So the items that have these three asterisks in front of them are, are again, items sort of that are, that are at, at the bottom of, of the wishlist, if you will, but that potentially could be added as alternates to the construction documents. Add alternates to the project, refinishing the floors throughout, including the main stair. Repainting the entire interior of the building. Adding new audio and video equipment to the meeting room and selective lighting in the meeting room. Just that room in particular being the largest room in the building. I thought that, you know, having a, an alternate in there for at least redoing the lighting in that space would be, would be appropriate. So the construction markups, the contingency, additional design fees, additional OPM fees. We discussed that, that actually Tim has the, has the legal credentials to be the owner's project manager if he, if he has the time. And, and to date, he's sort of, not going to say volunteered, but we've talked about Tim, maybe doing the bulk of that. Miscellaneous project expenses brings the project total to 6,288,000. Again, not including these, but that is getting into the ballpark of the budget that we were given that the town would have to proceed with this project without, without a new law referendum or without a new, a complete new vote. So that's, that's really it. This number does not include phasing the project. So it does not include, other than what might be in the miscellaneous project expenses, it doesn't include leasing costs for a new, for, for a temporary location. It includes very little for moving. It does not include new furniture for, for the building either. So it's a tight budget, but it's one that we think that we can, that we think is structured so that at least the, the bulk of the project can be done and the building can be brought back from the brink, if it will, in terms of renovation. So that's really, that's really it. As I said, you have the, an earlier overview of the budget in your packet. We combined some of the numbers to come up with this new number, but we didn't change any of the numbers.
All right, thank you, Drayton. Very thorough.
I think, I think the idea behind this is to try to knock off all the high priorities with the ability to potentially add some things later. Smaller projects in the future that, you know, we can do even when people are in the building themselves, you know. You know, I appreciate Drayton's time and effort on this, trying to get this put together for us for a, a Town Meeting coming up. Something that I am very passionate about, obviously being overseeing these buildings. The Town Hall is not an easy building by any means. It's the, you know, like they said, the Historic Commission, I think, said it's the crown jewel in Hamilton. But it also is our government workplace and I take pride in that. And I also, you know, there is liability, not only for citizens and residents coming into the building, but employees of the building itself. So I, I, obviously I've said this for probably three, almost four years to urge the citizens and, and the town to vote in favor of this, to get this done and provide a safe workplace and, and for residents as well as employees.
Thanks, Tim. Joe, you want to say something?
Yeah, real quickly. So, I mean, obviously, we know that the town has been trying for a couple of years to address the needs of Town Hall. We've been successful in getting support at Town Meeting in the past. We were not successful in, in getting a dead exclusion. I understand it was an expensive project. A lot of people had a real issue with that and in terms of priorities and where things stand. At this point, we feel it's necessary to propose a new project so that we can address the things that are most needed and try to live within the budget that we can live within. This proposal would not need us to go out to a dead exclusion. We have, through June 30th, we have enough free cash that we could utilize, as long as we do it before June 30th, we could utilize a free cash appropriation to, to supplement what the CPC has already given us and we'd have enough money to do the project as proposed today. Again, that doesn't, as, as Drayton said, it doesn't get us everything. It doesn't get us HVAC, it doesn't get upgraded electrical throughout the building. It does provide some spot electrical upgrades, particularly around the elevator and things like that. But it allows us to take care of the things that we need to move people out of the building to take care of. We can always in the future look at grants to try and do heat pumps or other more efficient heating solutions in smaller projects that wouldn't require us to move everybody out. And the idea here is to really attack the things that leave us open to adding cost in the future by having to address code requirements. If we're not ADA accessible, we don't meet fire code and most of the building code we don't meet. This will attack most of that, almost all of it, and give us a, a building that would be clean and more efficient and safer for everybody. And as I said, we can get into heating and electrical upgrades with grant money and, and, and future small free cash appropriations without having to go to the voters again. Shows that we're able to use the money that we have effectively.
Comments or questions for Drayton, Joe, Tim?
No, I mean, I think sort of it was what was asked of the community, I think it got voted. It's been approved at every Town Meeting. The only time it got voted against was when it went to a.
The dead exclusion.
Dead exclusion. So, so I think that if we eliminate the dead exclusion, then it's a project that will be, that will be favorable. And I think we cut some things. So we did, made the hard choices and the hard decisions and, but we're focused on making a safe building for our, we want to have good employees who work, want to work at Hamilton, right? So we're going to recruit people to help us make.
We, we want it to be safe for visitors as well. The residents come into this building on a pretty regular basis. You know, we want, want them to feel welcome here, we want them to feel pride in the building and feel that they're safe, so.
Virginia, you had a comment?
Uh, yes, you know, I forgot to introduce myself last time. Virginia Cooks of the 318 Bar Street. Yes, I had a question about the lower level, as in the cellar. Will any mold problems be addressed such that we'll be able to use that floor again? That would give us a fabulous increase in storage. That would give us a fabulous increase in storage and in office possibilities.
So we already use it for storage, and it's that we don't really know of any real significant mold problem. There is some dampness down there occasionally. You occasionally get a musty smell, but there's no mold that we've noticed. Drayton did point out that when they rebuild the north entrance where the ramp currently is, we waterproof that wall to try to stop that water infiltration from happening going forward. And, you know, we could definitely use the 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 lower level for, you know, more productively as storage by doing that. I have said in the past, and I'll continue to say, basements don't make good offices. That comes to somebody who once had an office in a basement. They're terrible places to ask people to work. For meeting rooms, for storage, that's fine. For the lunchroom, it's fine. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend establishing offices in a basement. It's it really affects the way people work. And I can say that for a
I wasn't suggesting that you do, just that it would be a possibility. There's one more question connected to the cellar, or I should say the basement. I know that years ago, we had a problem with work outside the building that interfered with the drainage from around the building. And I was part of the reason we had a bad flood in the in the cellar. Has that been corrected or is it going to be rebuilt?
You know, I'll ask Tim, there hasn't been any flooding in the basement since I've been here. I do know that shortly before I arrived, there was an event that caused some flooding. But my understanding was that that was a one off, that the building doesn't have a history of flooding in the basement. There was an event that happened, and I don't think that we'd be trying to prevent, you know, the additional work that we would do. We would try to, you know, help stop that from happening going forward, but we haven't had a repeat of that.
I was just concerned that I think it was just a rare event, and I thought it might have been basically just a mistake by somebody digging around around the building.
Right.
And drainage going the wrong way. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Virginia. I think John McGrath, John McGrath, do you have a question? Nope.
Nope. All right, perfect. Any other comments or questions for Drayton, Tim, or Joe? No, I think we're, you know, this, I think, is not the ideal direction, but it is the right direction for right now. And I think, as Joe said, it's room for additional upgrades as time goes on with grants and and other funding mechanisms that we can find. But this gets, for me, the two real big ones, the ADA, or should I say, three ADA bathrooms and fire suppression, which is what we're truly lacking in the building, which could get us closed down at any any moment if the state chooses to step in. So this will help us out if this passes at our next town meeting to move ahead with it. I think it's a good plan. All right. Thank you, Drayton and Tim. I appreciate you coming on tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. Tim, you're up next, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm staying on.
Up next, we've got Patton Park Master Plan Report with CBA Landscape Architects and Sean Timmons, who stayed on.
Do town meeting after that? You want to do CBA first?
Did I take it out of order here?
Yeah, you had a scheduled special town meeting.
Oh, let's let's pause for one second on the the master plan report, and we'll just talk about our special town meeting for June 2023, to possibly discuss and vote with Mr. Demelots and Tim Olson.
So the principal thing we're asking is for the select board to consider having a special town meeting on either June 14th or 15th.
It's a Wednesday and
It's a Thursday or Thursday. It's a it's a big, the the big reason for doing this is primarily the Gordon Conwell zoning that we had to take out of the warrant for this meeting. The Gordon Conwell zoning is progressing. The planning board continues to work on it. And the chairman and I continue to to work with the Gordon Conwell Seminary on a development agreement in tandem with that. We expect that those things will be ready to be vetted by the public during May and ready for a town meeting vote in June. Additionally,
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
Additionally, since we're trying to do a special town meeting, and we have free cash certified through June 30th, we thought it would be wise to try to address the town hall project at that same town meeting. The only, I've been telling, saying two, but we just recently had two more bills of priority. You're walking the door, so you, we're looking at a very small agenda. Three items, a zoning, a zoning article for the planning board, town hall article, and bills of priority here, which we never seem to get away from, no matter how. Those are the only things that we'd be asking the board to consider having on a warrant for a very short special. If we do that, there would possibly be no need to have a fall time meeting. Very likely. We're trying to get it all wrapped up.
The hope is to not have an October meeting or November meeting.
And Sean, Tim, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that by having the meeting in June and hopefully voting in favor of the town hall, the estimates that Drayton gave through PMNC were for a potential fall-winter project. Just letting you, those were the were the numbers. So the June meeting would line up pretty well with with a possible fall-winter project for town hall.
So the goal would be to have the town meeting in June if the project gets approved. Tim and Drayton put bid out. That takes six to eight weeks. By August, we're signing a contract. In September, you're moving town hall folks out of here and starting a project here sometime in the fall. Right, Tim, that's about the right timeline?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
So that would be our goal, and we'd probably be out at Patton Homestead for 18 months to two years.
And so I'll I'll add that the the thinking behind the Wednesday or Thursday meeting was, at least in my mind, we've had years passed before we had a citizens petition. We always had our meetings during the week. And this being such a short agenda, you know, it wouldn't be a carryover, hopefully, over a couple of nights. It would just be one night, a couple of hours, and and get what we need to do done. And then it would, it would save the weekend for parents and sports and whatever else we needed to do.
That is a holiday weekend as well. 17th is immediately before Juneteenth on Monday, so.
And we figured people, if the other option was to have it that Saturday, but we thought that maybe people would be out of town with a three day weekend.
School.
Right, and the end of school, basically, is that
Coming right around the corner from there.
Those same couple of days or
I have it on my calendar as June 14th. My wife marked it as June 14th is the last day of my son's kindergarten, but that could have changed with snow days.
Right, right. Most schools are kind of at Friday, I think, so. So I guess thoughts on the weeknight and then thoughts on Wednesday or Thursday? Do you think the weeknight's a good idea to kind of get it done before school's out and there's that long weekend? Because otherwise, we're carrying over
We talked about doing a weekday, going back to the weekday meetings, so I would be in favor. Is there a opportunity to try it?
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, do you have a inkling on either either direction?
I have no plans to be away.
I appreciate that, Mr. Bowler.
Sounds like an endorsement to me. Ringing endorsement.
So do we think Wednesday or Thursday, then, I guess, is the next question?
I just
Wednesday.
Check what, if you have
Both both dates are available at the high school. The auditorium is available.
We've pre-preloaded the the options, I guess, with the high school.
Let's say Wednesday is a
What's that? You say Wednesday?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday? Okay, Wednesday, the
Is that a motion?
Is that Wednesday, the 14th?
Wednesday, the 14th, yeah.
All right, so I would accept a motion for a special town meeting on Wednesday, June 14th. All right, second by Tom. All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right.
At your next meeting, I'll have a schedule for how we roll this out.
Right.
That's Flag Day.
Wednesday is Flag Day? How did I miss that?
No, wait, maybe Tuesday.
That's not
Wednesday, June 14th is Flag Day.
Is that a
It's not a holiday.
It's not a, not an official holiday, is it, Mr.?
I just had a quick question. What time on the 14th?
Oh, that'd be good. Seven or 6:30?
What time did we used to do it at, Joe?
When it, when it was at night, I think it was like seven o'clock.
I think we did it at seven, right? Yeah. So seven o'clock, because I think we used to usually cut them off at 11 o'clock if they were going long.
I'd say 6:30, but
Let's say seven.
Okay.
All right, so do we need to, do we need to re-motion, or can we just agree that that's what we're saying? Okay, perfect.
Tell me to hold it that day, and I'll tell you seven o'clock's the best time anyway.
All right. Now we have the review of the Patton Park Master Plan with CBA Landscape Architects and Sean Timmons, our director. So I'll hand it over to you guys to tell us all about the master plan.
Yeah, sure, I can just do a brief and kind of a real, real brief intro and then hand it over to Megan. So on the Zoom with us, and joining us is Megan Tompkins from CBA Landscape Architects. She was sort of the the main point person that that Tim and I were working with on this project. And certainly she has a presentation to go through and can talk more about the the process that we went through to acquire information. We did a ton of public outreach and really, you know, was able to get a lot of really great feedback from community members to then turn into what we hope is a well-received master plan. So I guess without, turn it over to Megan. Joe, do you have her?
I'm just looking for her now, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Hi, Megan, thanks for joining us.
If it's at all easier, I can share from my screen and just look through myself.
All right, because you asked, I'll let you do that.
It's always, yeah.
Works.
Yeah. All right, let's see. Hang on. I've got it up. Okay.
And while she's doing that, Sean, is this up on our website yet?
Yeah, you know what? I was actually just going to mention that it is. So Laurie posted it on the town website, so it's right there on the on the main page. And after tonight, I will go ahead and and kind of post maybe just the presentation. This, you know, like on on Facebook or Instagram, on my social media sites with a link to the actual report itself. But the report is up on the website.
Perfect.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name's Megan Tompkins. I'm a principal at CBA Landscape Architects. I am going to try to be kind of quick, but try to, you know, hit all the relevant points here. I've been working with Sean and Tim on this master plan for Patton Park since the fall. And like Sean said, we've gotten a lot of, we've really focused this effort on, you know, getting community feedback, community input. And I think we've put together a pretty comprehensive plan and kind of set of options for the park. All right. So this is just a quick overview. I think we don't need to go through the project team. Like I said, we had several visioning sessions. We showed up at Pumpkin Fest. We did an online survey that had almost 500 responses. It's really an incredible response. And then a final meeting, and we're finalizing a master plan report. So our final project product here is really like a plan and cost estimates at a schematic level to help Sean and Tim, you know, sort out future funding for these improvements. And I will probably talk a bit about the about the community input and visioning. But I always like to say at the beginning of this that one of the things that we recognize about Patton Park is that it has a lot of really great uses that are working really well. It has a lot of assets already. We're not looking to move everything around or make it super modern or anything. Really just some, you know, sort of overall improvements that make it maybe a little more accessible, a little friendlier for all of the Hamilton users, park users. So, yeah, like I said, we had visioning meetings. We had this online survey, which was really great because I think between the meetings and the online survey, we got feedback from really different groups, different park users. A lot of the online survey respondents were, you know, families, people with kids, people in sports, people who use the playground. A lot of the folks who could make, who come to the meetings were maybe, you know, walkers, people who enjoyed, you know, the music events at the gazebo, stuff like that. So I think we did a pretty good job of getting feedback from many different groups within Hamilton. And as you can see here, this is some of the feedback sheets that we presented one of the meetings that was really well attended at the senior center. And like I said earlier, uses at the park are great. People generally love them. We did get a lot of those responses that were like, the park is great, don't change it, except maybe this one thing, you know? So without, and I I don't feel like I need to run through this. I assume everyone here is really, you know, up on everything that's in the park already. Unless anybody's got a question?
No.
Okay, great. Perfect. So I'm going to hop into the proposed master plan. I saw that Virginia raised her hand. Can I answer that at the end of the presentation? Is anyone, does the select board have a process or no?
You can go ahead. We'll, we'll wait to the end, and then people can ask questions, so.
Yeah, let's do that. That sounds good, because I can kind of, hopefully, I'll answer your question on the way.
Yep, perfect.
Thank you.
If not, we'll get to it. Okay, awesome. So some of the so we identified a whole list of, you know, sort of things that, what kind of a wishlist of things that people asked for within the park. Some of the, probably the two biggest items were path access. And I have, I'll say that when I say path access, that means a couple of different things. That means path, so the park currently doesn't have a lot of paths, you know, between things like the parking lot and tennis courts, the parking lot and the playground. So this is a pretty clear, clear improvement that can be made. You know, would help with ADA and Massey, the accessibility throughout the park. So pathways was a big one. There, along with the pathways, I will say people also asked for both a loop path around the pond and seeding along paths. And the, another thing that sort of goes along with this, but has been broken out into other tasks, is shade. That was another huge, huge wish for Patton Park was more shade, both trees and potentially built shade, you know, open sided shade structures. So task A is park, is pathways. And I will say that this is a thing, this is a, we've, we've called it task A, but it's could be broken down even further. You could do the loop path at one time and the other path at another time. And the second sort of most, most, I don't want to say popular, but the most urgent wish for Patton Park was improved bathroom facilities. There's currently a bathroom, if you guys can see my hand, which I'm hoping you can,
Yeah.
all the way over here by the by the baseball field. And there were a lot of comments that the bathrooms are too far away, they need maintenance, that, you know, they need, yeah, accessibility. There are sort of a lot of areas in which the bathrooms need to be improved. So we talked about several kind of options, and I'm just going to flip forward. Task A, path, task B. We talked about this in like two sort of different scales. Either a small bathroom that would really be an apples to apples replacement of the bathroom building that Patton Park already has. Or potentially a larger building that would be a combined use building that could also have things like Little League concessions. Since the location, I'm just going to flip back and use my little hand. Right here, we're proposing sort of moving it away from the far, the right field of the baseball, sort of between the fields and also much closer to the playground. So hopefully, that would make many of the different park users a little bit happier to have a bathroom a little bit closer. Anyway, smaller option, B1, small restroom. Larger option is a larger combined building with an open sided pavilion, as you can see on the sort of top right here. It's open on one side. It has picnic tables. It could be used, you know, for games. It could It could be, you know, for use associated with the gazebo. It could be used for camps. So there's a lot of, a lot of advantages to a larger building. Of course, the cost is higher. We'll get to the cost at the end. I'm just going to run through the rest of these. There are, there are quite a few. One of the other sort of popular suggested improvements was paving the access driveway and the parking that runs along commuter rail line. It's a, it's a big cost, but it would sort of allow a little more control over that, that driveway. One more option was there'd been a lot of talk with the Little League about making changes to the Little League field, sort of in conjunction, potentially with the bathrooms and concessions. But just wanted to show you that the current orientation of the Little League field, the right field overlaps that driveway. So it's a short right field. And if you're driving there, you might get hit by the ball. So we are, we're proposing, you know, shifting it so that this, the black line Little League field is the shifted orientation. You would obviously have to rebuild the backstop and the infield and all of those things. And I am presenting these as sort of separate tasks because, you know, they can be phased. They could be, you know, you could do the, the most important one first. You could do things as funding comes up. So I'll keep going just in the interest of time. Another improvement that came up was repairing, refurbishing the existing gazebo. As you can see in the existing additions photos, it, it needs some repairs, you know, ceiling, carpentry, roof. So there's, there's potential there. Coming back to those comments from the community about shade being desired around the park, we looked into providing a, a pretty simple kind of New England-style, open-sided shade structure in several areas in the park. I have a little key plan here. It's right here. This, this blob is the playground. This is the area I'm showing here. This would be a little shade area very close to the playground. So, you know, families with young kids would have somewhere to go. Would also be planting trees, so it's sort of that double-pronged shade approach. All right. As we move along, we also talked about adding additional gathering spaces and planting along the, the bottom edge of Weaver Pond. And I know there had been sort of a previous community effort to build a new fire pit here. So this was something that we thought was a great idea. So we sort of incorporated this in along with another shade structure. And I would like to say that we're showing a lot of little shade structures. And if the town decides, actually, you want one and a lot and a few more trees, like, that would be an okay approach. This is just really like, to sort of respond to all of the need areas on the site, we're showing a lot of different options. Additionally, we wanted to, you know, show a treatment to, to the existing fire pit, the very old one on the, on the side of Weaver Pond, showing another shade structure. This would also be a great place for camp groups, you know, for picnics. And it's another great opportunity for some plantings. All right. And then a final sort of seating area would just be like, and this is at the north end of the pond, closer to the schooling fields, where there is a little grove of mature pine trees. Since we would have this new loop path around the pond, we're talking about putting in a, a really low-key stone dust seating area with picnic tables. So that is just another, just another thought for adding, you know, seating and use areas around the site. Another one of the sort of wishlist items for the master plan was lighting. We would suggest only lighting sort of the main use area of the park and, you know, obviously on a, on a timer. But what we're proposing are lights only in this sort of swath between the Asbury Road parking and the parking near the pool. So that would be, you know, just limited pedestrian scale lights. Not, we wouldn't want to be lighting the back of the site. We don't obviously want anyone probably in the back of the site at night. And so that's sort of the final, the final sort of wishlist item that we had identified. Like I said earlier, these are all kind of, these are mostly things that could be done in a sort of à la carte way. I would like to point out that the, the sort of first two, the sort of the pathways and the restroom were clearly identified as the, the sort of highest priorities. So, I mean, those would be the two I would encourage you to look at implementing first. We also did a schematic level cost estimate for these items. And this will all be in our final report that we'll be handing over to Sean and Tim shortly. They have a pretty good draft right now. Sean, and have I forgotten anything important here?
No, I think you, you hit on everything. I think, you know, one of the things that when, you know, we talked about those pathways or improving the drainage onsite was that sort of, kind of frames the, the site for us to then move on to the kind of smaller or the other items, I guess. But, you know, having that sort of, that site work and that framework done first, we felt that that would then lead to, you know, making it easier and having exact locations for our other, other amenities that, that we might, might need.
Definitely. All right. I can flip back to, this is probably good for a sort of overall. Virginia, would you like to ask your question or does anyone else have questions?
Well, I can wait for others if they have questions. Add me.
Oh, I don't, I don't see any, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, I wrote things down as quickly as I could as you went through it. I ended up with two questions. One is, you said on the driveway, the drive that goes along the W, the Amitya rail. Okay, I think that is. Task D, I believe. You said that by paving that road, that would allow, it would change, would change to the road would add control of that space. I didn't know what that meant.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we had a lot of comments on this in the online survey that things like people drive too fast, the parking is a little bit of a free-for-all sometimes. Sorry if I'm overstating that. So if we design this driveway as a paved driveway, we'll be able to keep it a consistent width. We'll be able to designate parking areas so people are not parking, you know, in unmarked areas. And we'd be able to add, you know, signage for motorists, you know, slow down, stop, you know, typical traffic signage. So that's, that's all I mean by control is that.
Sorry, just to jump into, and it will also allow us the ability to have handicap parking down near the large baseball diamond, which we currently do not have. So the nearest handicap, official handicap parking space for access down to that back, back baseball diamond is basically, you know, in the tennis courts or at the, at the pool parking lot. So that will provide, you know, or give us the opportunity to provide handicap parking down, back, back at that, back near the baseball diamond.
May I respond to please?
Sure, Virginia, go ahead.
Well, actually, I can see by the drawing that parking you're referring to adding is at the very end of the road. So to me, that's not parallel parking. Parallel parking sounds like you do on the road, which means the road has to be that much wider, doesn't it? And also paved roads tend to make people go faster.
So just to speak to the parallel parking, I am, so this area in the back that is near the horseshoe pits and the back, you know, the backstop of the baseball would not be parallel parking. That would be typical nose-in parking. These little bump outs along the, the road, the driveway would be the parallel parking. So we believe we would be able to add some parking along that edge.
Okay, thank you. My other question, actually, it's a concern. And even though I wrote down the tasks as we go along, perhaps the question isn't on question because it appears you don't intend to do anything between the end of the parking lot for the, the swimming pool and between the, in the playground. That area is sort of low. It loves to, it's a natural drainage area. It stays wet a lot. Sometimes flooding all the way in there. So I was just concerned what you were going to, I was wondering what you were going to try to do there, therefore this would be a problem. If you're not planning to do anything about, you know, using that area, then that's a non-question.
So, Virginia, I'm sorry, I definitely did not speak clearly enough to this point during my presentation, but we had wrapped a bunch of drainage, drainage correction into that task with the, with the pathways. So I think to do the pathways, you have to correct the drainage. And I think correcting the drainage is the right thing for this, this site.
Agreed.
Yep.
And the last thing was, obviously I haven't been down there for a while, sorry. Now, having kids, children, I tend not to be down there a lot when there are a lot of children around. So I was, I was surprised to hear you have a fire pit down here. Where is it?
So we are, so there's an existing fire pit all the way over here that is, looks pretty much like it has not been used in a decade, a long time. We had proposed a second fire pit right here where my, where my hand is. It's still a pretty far distance from the playground. And I, I'm not concerned about safety between the playground and that, that fire pit. I would hope everyone is, you know, is observing both the children and the fire pit separately, so.
Fingers, fingers crossed, Meg.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Okay, I have other questions, but they, it would likely be better for me to ask at a different time, so.
You know, Virginia, what you can do if you want to, you can, you can email Sean or Tim and they would totally fill those questions for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, and this is kind of, you know, since we're just master planning, this is, a lot of this is at the moment pie in the sky, but this gives us a really good jumping off point for what we want to do because over the years, we've kind of been piecemeal with things at the park and they don't all quite match or add up. And this really helps us with a cohesive visioning plan for how the park could look if we, if we did all these different kind of separate projects and, and put them all into one big basket here at the park, which I think is really great. I think Megan and her crew did a really, really good job of getting all the input and doing all the drafting and, and planning everything out. If everything does come to fruition, it's going to be really, it's a, it's a really beautiful park now, but it's going to be a really stellar park if, if all this stuff comes to fruition at some point in time. Any questions?
Is it nice to think about pie in the sky? It's a fun thing to think about to start with.
Yeah, and, and a lot of times we get people that want to donate or help out. So this really kind of gives people an idea of, hey, you know, you could donate a tree for this spot or you could sponsor a bench, et cetera. Comments from the board?
Thank you again.
I got two questions. Once again, like Sean said, great to have a master plan, well-thought-out, a lot of participation. Two questions. One was, obviously I like the layout of the new sort of bathroom snack orientation of the field, but the question, I had a question about, and maybe I missed, I apologize, but the tank. So where, what's the solution for the tank and where, what's the thought process of that?
So that's a great question. That was a, that was a hot topic in the online survey. People really love the tank. So if you leave the, the Little League field how it is, you do not need to touch the tank. It may be a little close to the bathroom, but I don't think so. If you rotate the tank, you would need to move it, but you could easily move it not that far from its regular location and, or from its existing location. And I, my sense is that, and I apologize, I know I'm not from Hamilton. My sense is that people might have an issue with it, the initial moving, and then it would be fine. It would still be in the same general location in the park. You would still be able to interact with it in the exact same way.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's brands us. I mean, I think it's important to see sort of the tank and the flagpole from the road. So I think that's something that is important, I think, to the community to be able to.
We would maintain that, that sightlines and the prominence of the tank in that sort of central area between the gazebo and the playgrounds and the fields. Yep. So I mean, that, that would be my recommendation, not that I'm, you know, making any.
No, I mean, it's a good thought, man, I'm sure. Just something to think about. The other thing was sort of this, once again, favor of the walking paths. Just curious, you know, what you see as a successful material that's used in, in walking paths and this, you know, is it, is it asphalt? Is it concrete? Is it something else? What are you seeing used as successful walking paths that sort of withstand the test time and don't create too much impervious surfaces and things like that?
Sure. So we talked about doing sort of main paths in like bituminous concrete because especially main paths that, that access things like the playground, DPW would be able to plow them in the winter or, you know, clear them so that they can still be used. And we also talked about having some secondary paths. So I think there's like a little access path back here. We're talking about doing a picnic area that could be like a stabilized stone dust that still meets Massey AAB, but is like a more natural surface. So we're showing a mix of those materials within the park.
Gotcha.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have some, but not that I really need to ask at this time. Virginia asked one of my questions.
I'll give you the same advice that I gave Virginia. You could follow up with Tim and Sean at a later time. All right. Thank you very much, Meg. Thank you, Sean. Thanks, Megan. Thank you, Tim. Very, very comprehensive.
Thank you so much.
Take care, everyone. Thanks, Megan.
All right. I know.
Bye-bye.
Great job.
See you, Tim.
Up next, we have review and finalize annual town meeting script with our town manager and town council.
And this is the point where in our prep, where you guys decide who's going to make motions and move what motions. Sean did point out that what you have has an error in one of the articles versus what is, should be in the actual printed warrant. I don't have the printed warrant with me, but don't worry so much about the warrant language. We're just going to focus on the script language right now because I think that there's one error.
I think that there's a, this is an older version with the script.
Not the version that went to the printer.
This is not the version that went to the printer.
The script, you had a couple versions of the script that came out, right? So there's a recent.
There was one that came today.
Yeah, that's what we should be looking at, right?
That is what you're looking at, yeah. And I gave it to you in hard copy as well, so.
Okay, same one here? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Tom?
Sure. Hi, Tom. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Thanks for sticking with us.
Oh, no problem. Do you want to just go through? So Article One.
Yeah, let's just go right through.
Sure. Article One reports, I think typically somebody has recognized this for the purposes of making a motion that the reports of all town offices and committees be received and placed on file. In the last, as you know, in the last several town meetings in the interest of. that the, uh, reports of all town offices and committees be received and placed on file. In the last, as you know, in the last several town meetings in the interest of time, and it, at the time due to COVID, there were no actual reports that were given, but my understanding is that at this town meeting, there may be some brief reports, as the moderator has indicated, from the Patent Homestead Working Group as well as the Planning Board to talk about the upcoming zoning article that will be on the special town meeting warrant in June.
Yeah, the only thing I'd tell you, Thomas, is that instead of reports on the Patent Homestead Working Group, that's gonna be a report from the, uh, Master Plan Steering Committee and the Planning Board, so.
Hey Joe, sorry, this is Christina.
Hi, Christina, go ahead.
Sorry to jump in. Um, uh, I just wanted to mention that John McGrath and I are here. I think it's only the two of us from the FinCom. We had posted a meeting for today, but it was on short notice, and we don't have a quorum, so.
Yeah, Christina, if someone shows up at any point, feel free to interrupt and, and call it a order, so you're not in violation OML.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here, because we'll probably ask you about some of the financial motions and who's making what, so. Should we, should this motion identify who's gonna be recognized?
Yeah.
We have to blank there. We need to fill in the blank.
Correct.
So.
Where are we here? Sorry.
Article, one dash two.
Yeah, one dash two.
Sean, do you want to introduce, uh, the Master Plan Steering Committee and then the Planning Board?
Sure.
Okay, the second one is the, uh, one dash three articles for the consent motion. We identified several articles that would be considered for the consent calendar this year, so someone would need to make the motion to.
Caroline said she would love to do that.
I can do that one.
Bill, love to do that. I tried.
Okay.
Gonna give her a more challenging one.
We know exactly which one.
Yeah.
Article two dash one is on the consent agenda, however, in the event that for some reason it were taken off the consent agenda, we would need somebody to make that motion. Typically, this article has, if, it, it, it has never been removed since I've been doing town meeting, but, uh, we usually had somebody from the Finance Committee lined up to make the motion if necessary.
Do we want to do that, or do you just want to do the consent if they come off the consent bill?
I'm fine doing that unless, uh, Christina or John have a different opinion, but I have no problem doing the ones that stay on.
Is that fine with you, Christina and John? If Bill just, if something gets pulled out of the consent that he just does it?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, perfect.
Makes it cleaner.
Yep. Right, very soothing. Compliments'll get you nowhere, still.
Article, uh, two dash two, bills of a prior year, this one was not included on the, um, consent agenda because of the quantum vote.
Yeah.
And that's, uh, one that typically has been made by a FinCom member.
In, in FinCom, Christina or, or John, did you guys have somebody you had in mind for this one?
Um, I think I would do this one. I was the one who wrote the.
Okay.
Also, I, I'm gonna volunteer other people for the harder ones.
Perfect. That's the way to do it, Madam Chair.
Let the dollar model get filled in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that. I mean, I, I have it already elsewhere, so we'll just get it to Tom.
Okay, uh, two dash three is the budget article. So I had, uh, similar format to what we followed in previous years. I, I had that the moderator would recognize the superintendent of schools to speak on the school district budget, as well as the town manager to report on the town budget. And then we'll need somebody to make the motion, which has typically been a FinCom member.
Okay, and Eric, Eric knows he's doing that, I assume?
Yeah.
Okay. And Christina, did you have somebody that was gonna do this one?
John, who, um, who wrote the bulk of this one? Was it John Prulidge?
Yeah, I think John Prulidge was gonna do it.
Okay.
John and Harry teamed up on it, but I think John was gonna do it.
Okay, so John Prulidge for that motion?
Okay, Article two dash four, the capital article. And, um, I, I did leave a space to see if there was anyone who was gonna be recognized to speak on the article, whether it would be Joe or, or someone else to talk generally about the capital plan. If that's not the case, then we can take that out and just have whoever's going to be making the motion.
My suggestion, and you can take it at what it's worth, is not to do that unless somebody asks if people are fine with that.
Mine is similar. I was gonna say, if, if somebody has a question about a particular item on the capital, well, I'd be happy to be there to answer it or have Tim, but I think it's.
Just in the essence of time.
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take that out. We won't recognize anybody unless there's somebody calls something out.
So who's gonna make the motion?
And then the motion of capital expenditures. Any of us want to do it, or we want to hand it off to FinCom?
I'm happy to take it.
All right, all right. Tom's got it. I like it, Tom spending money. All right, Fire Engine, right?
Fire Engine, Article two dash five, um, same.
Same.
I don't know, it's either a select board member, a member of FinCom.
I'd say, I'd say the same with the, we don't need to recognize anybody for a report, because it kind of explains it, that we, why we need it, and everything's pretty self-explanatory, so we'll get rid of that. And then, uh, anybody want to make a fire truck motion, Caroline?
Caroline, I mean, everyone loves fire, fire trucks. Who doesn't like a fire truck? Trying a new fire truck.
I mean, you've been in full fire gear, you've climbed the tower, I mean, this is, this is recalling.
Two six, two sixes on the, uh, two sixes on the consent agenda.
We'll have Chief Burnett bring some turnout gear for you for the reading of the motion. Get your little plastic fire hat out.
With sticker too.
All right, Caroline for two dash five, two dash six.
Two six, two seven, two eight, two nine are all on the consent agenda.
So that's you, right, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's four of them. Two six, two seven, two eight, two nine.
Okay. OPEB, oh no, sorry, um, stabilization fund. Are we recognizing someone from the FinCom to talk about this, Christine or, or John? Or do you just want to make?
Like to make the, to make the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is for, yes, for the stabilization.
I think we can do just the motion.
Yep.
For this one.
Okay.
Let's, let's have, um, sorry, I'd just like to have the person do it, who wrote the, wrote this thing for the book of recommendations, but, um, let's actually have David Wanger do that one.
Okay. All right. Revolving Fund two eleven to raise. That's also the consent, right? Two twelve.
Consent, uh, that's also.
Consent too, but Jay Butler maybe you might want to do that one if it gets.
Yeah, we'll see that. Let's, if that one's held on the consent, we'll have Jay speak to that one, so Jay Butler.
Yeah, I agree.
For two twelve, if held. And, uh, Jay also for two, um, thirteen.
Correct.
Okay.
Two fourteen is the, um.
Borrowing.
Borrowing for the turf field project.
Do you want the presentation for the turf field project to happen before two thirteen? Because it includes both thirteen and fourteen, CPC. And then the actual borrowing.
What's, what is the question, Joe?
So you have, you have, you're gonna have a presentation from the superintendent and the parent group on the field project, but they're getting, they're getting money from CPC too, so do you want that happening before two dash thirteen?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
So after Jay Butler, he should recognize.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So after the motion is made, then we're going to recognize.
Eric Tracy and a cast of others.
Right, when we introduce, when Jay introduced two thirteen, then we'll do the presentation and then, right, do the motion and, and vote.
Is it, is the, is there a specific group that it's known as? Is it like a booster squad?
There's a, and I'm gonna forget, the athletic fields improvement. I can't think of what it's.
Mini, right?
Let me see if I can find it real quick. Peter, maybe?
I can find it.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't.
While they're looking, while looking, Joe, so not to add minutes to the meeting tonight, but we had tabled our motion to recommend favorable action on two fourteen. I need more information, which I've gotten, I have more information, so I'm prepared to.
It's this one.
Do that tonight rather than have a separate meeting before, tell me.
Eight Hamilton Wenham Athletic.
It's the Hamilton Wenham Athletic Facilities Improvement Committee, also known as the HWA FIC.
Did you get that, Tom?
Hamilton Wenham Athletic.
Facilities.
Improvement Committee.
Yeah.
Fifty million dollar word.
All right, so let's talk about who's gonna make the motion, and then we can talk about how we feel on favorable or unfavorable action.
Did you want me to do it?
Yes.
All right, Caroline will make the motion.
I recently heard that the Hamilton Select Board unanimously is, um, recommended it. Is that correct? The Wenham, I'm sorry.
The Wenham Select Board did?
Yeah. Well, that was the rumor on the internet. I just want to put that out there.
Rumors, rumors out there.
Don't worry, David.
Maybe you just put.
No pressure.
So, yeah, so we had a discussion last time, pending some information. I got that information, but, so, I'm not sure if we, we have to do something. So we either have to do it now, or we have to have a meeting before.
Before.
Correct. We're all together right now.
Really poorly last time. I'd like to pull it out. I'm meeting right before.
If I could just make a motion and we can talk about it?
Yeah, let's do that.
I make a motion that we recommend favorable action on Article, uh, three, sorry, two dash fourteen.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jamie? All right, further discussion?
So, last time I was waiting to sort of understand what the dollar, the max dollar amount would be, right? So, one's getting hard to get in writing, but when you back that fifteen million dollars up to all the funds that are gonna be raised at town meeting with the funds that we already have, the fundraising goals that they have, when they've already raised a date, it turns out it's somewhere probably between six and seven million dollars that.
That's about what we.
Ask, and that's what we sort of always figured. So, so that's sort of, even if there was gonna be a, when there's gonna be a thirteen million dollar project, we thought our, our ass would be six or seven. So if we raise more money, the project gets bigger. Municipal language and the bonding language and all that stuff aside, I'm, I'm in favor of that six to seven million dollar number. Unfortunately, we can't write it that way, but it doesn't mean I'm against the, I'm against the way it's written, not against the article, so I would be prepared to vote favorable action on the, on the, on this article, based on what I've learned about the fundraising and the, where the dollars are coming from, so.
Okay.
And the warrant article is changed, has? Not, not a warrant, the script, the actual motion that might be, that will be read, um, evidently by Caroline, will now say, um, that the total amount, or, this is the end of the, of the, damn, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. That the total amount authorized to be expended by the regional school district under the regional school committee bond authorization in this vote shall be reduced by any grants or gifts received for such purposes and any amounts allocated to the project from the excess and deficiency fund.
Good.
That was an agreement between, uh, town council, council from the town of Ham, uh, Wenham and the school district in a meeting last Friday afternoon.
Right, yes, that's correct, that we did meet, um, with the school department superintendent and finance director. I know that the language is going to be forwarded to school council as well as the bond council. We had proposed some language on Friday afternoon after the meeting, and I hadn't heard back definitively on what's acceptable. So, so it's possible that it, there could be some minor tweaks to this, but generally speaking, what the motion will state is that it's an authorization to approve the full debt of fifteen million, subject to a proposition two and a half override, and that any expenditure shall be reduced by gifts, grants, and, uh, money's allocated from excess and deficiency.
So the district did agree to.
And back and forth with respect to exactly what the excess and deficiency language is, but that's the overall gist of what the motion will be.
So they've theoretically agreed to that change or that addition. They just want to make sure they get the language right, that it doesn't limit or tie their hands. They want it to be suitably flexible enough, but suitably, uh, apparent enough that they, the money from this year's excess and deficiency that's already been voted by the school committee will count towards reducing the overall debt.
As well as any future allocations.
When the school committee votes it. But the warrant's been printed, and that language is not in the warrant, it's gonna, but it's gonna be. It's gonna be in the script, and it'll be the motion that's made on the town meeting floor, and that's what matters.
Right, and, and it's within the scope of the article. The article currently says, as it's printed in the warrant, it makes a reference to, um, expenditures would be decreased by any gifts or grants. The, as you know, the school, one of the items that we had to clarify from the last select board meeting was whether or not the excess and deficiency would also be used essentially to come off, uh, to, to cut the amount that would be borrowed. That was confirmed by the school superintendent and their finance off, director at the meeting on Friday.
All right, so it's, it's different language, or it's actually more clear, right, so.
So Caroline's gonna be reading language that's gonna be different than what's printed in everyone's packet. But it'll be up on the, right, but.
Motion's not in the warrant.
Motion's not in. Oh, the motion's not in the warrant. Motion's never in the warrant. Motion is always, but it will be up on the screen in front of everybody, and it'll be read, and that's what the clerk will take minutes on.
Yep.
And, so, uh, this is John. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
So, obviously, there's some new news. I heard six to seven million, so is there, is that gonna be presented?
So.
As a, as a good faith estimate, or?
Well, I guess, John, I'll just.
The select board's making a recommendation with a lot of new information, um, and I just think we need to sort of write it down.
Yeah, I guess it's, just to clarify, it's not, we're talking about the Hamilton portion of the project is six or seven million?
Of borrowing.
Of borrowing. It's not.
The Hamilton portion.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're taking the fifteen million, we're reducing all the grants and et cetera, and, and throwing in at least a million dollars in private fundraising, gives us down to the six and a half, the seven million dollar range for our portion.
Yeah, I mean, I just heard a bunch of flurry of information, and I'm just trying to catch up to what you guys are talking about.
I thought Harry was actually gonna do that.
So it's still, it's still a fifteen million dollar project.
Right.
Yes.
Less, you know, stabilization fund, less private fundraising, less CPC.
Right.
And then if you do the split between Hamilton and Wenham, six or seven, so it's still a fifteen million dollar project.
Correct, yes, but the debt.
Okay, that's fine.
But yeah, I, I agree, there should be a slide that does that math.
Yeah, and I think Harry, I think Harry talked about. Harry was talking about maybe doing something with that.
Yeah, okay. All right, so the story hasn't necessarily shifted at all, it's just, it sounds like you guys caught up to their math.
Yeah.
So that's fair. Okay, good, just wanted to clarify.
Thanks, John.
Can you confirm for me, though, the article language has not changed?
No.
No.
It still has that minus gifts and.
Yeah, correct, right, correct.
Yeah, yeah, the theory still holds.
Right.
Yeah, I get it.
So just one quick thing, um, South Hamilton still appears in this motion. We need to strike South.
This is an old version, the version that went to the printer and that will be in the books when you get it, is, doesn't say.
Just want to be sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's the, as we know, motion doesn't, I mean, the warrant doesn't matter, the motion does, and there's no such thing as South Hamilton.
You know what's interesting? They disagree.
Well, tell that to everyone that wants my address.
Oh, I know they do. So this is, this is the bottom line.
Exists, but.
There are three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in the Commonwealth. South Hamilton is not one of them.
My credit card.
It's a post office delivery.
My credit card bill, they added South in red pen and underlined it to come to my house.
Agree. They do for us too, and it's not one of the three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in the Commonwealth. It's just not.
Tomato, tomato.
The post office made it up.
I have to ask Christina a question. Um, at the last meeting, Harry was indicating he was gonna make an, uh, an amendment from the floor, which he's entitled to. Do you know, is he still considering that?
Yes.
Okay. Does he know that he has to submit it in writing? Okay, does he know that he has to submit it in writing to the town clerk ahead of time to be reviewed?
Ahead of time?
Yes, I mean.
We would highly recommend it.
He shouldn't just come up and hand it to me at the beginning of the meeting, is what I'm saying, he should, so.
But do it in advance.
Right.
Yeah, it would be good if we had council vet it, we, we've had amendments on the floor, and it's, it's a bit of a, we'll say it's not ideal. Yes, we should be prepared, better than, yes, that.
I'm definitely bringing lunch.
Good, 'cause I'm not buying it.
And so he's doing that, I, I advise him that he, he can do that as an individual citizen, that's not
Yeah.
in his role as a private income member.
I would just make that clear, and when he stands up to make the, if he does, make that clear that he's speaking as a private citizen instead of a member of the board.
Right.
Alright.
And then just to, just to put a fine point on it, Tom McElhenney, the, you feel like the language, which is grants or gifts, I think, that, that now covers grants or gifts received, plus the stabilization fund reference, you feel like that covers all of the funding sources that we're considering?
Send me something along.
Right, there's no reference to the stabilization fund here, it's the excess and deficiency fund allocation from the regional school district, so, yes, it would include any, the expenditure, any expenditure would be reduced by gifts or grants received, as well as amounts allocated from the excess and deficiency fund by the school committee.
Right, because, and Christina, they're taking their E and D and they're putting it in their stabilization fund and paying out, so that's.
That's all I meant, but just so the CPC funds that they're getting, I think there's one other source, too, we just wanted to make sure that those all fall under grants or gifts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct, so any, the CPC funds would, in my opinion, would be considered a grant, and then obviously any private fundraising that's done would be gifted to the school department for purposes of funding this project.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, three dash one, I think.
You didn't vote on motion.
Oh, we didn't vote on motion, sorry.
On the floor.
Getting ahead of myself, so, we had a motion, we had a second, we had some discussion, any further discussion? People know we're, we're voting on favorable action for the turf improvement project.
One out of the, I talked about was not knowing the date by which the gifts and all the received counted or didn't count, or when they could say that they no longer were getting it, did we need to get to the bottom of that?
Sure, so I did talk to a couple of my colleagues about that, as well as it was discussed during a conversation with the school district as well, and, and in my opinion, the way, so the way these projects typically work is there's a bond authorization for, in this case, fifteen million dollars, which is then gonna be offset by gifts, grants, and excess and deficiency allocations. So typically, you, the, the, the school district, or if it was the town that was borrowing the money, you wouldn't borrow all of the money at, all at once, because you don't need it all at once, you don't need to start paying interest on it at, all at once, so usually there's kind of temporary borrowings that take place over the course of the project as you need funding, and, so presumably, if the school district had funds, and whether it was through the excess and deficiency allocation, or whether it's from gifts or grants, then not, if they had enough to cover whatever they needed for kind of that portion of the project, presumably they're not gonna borrow, because they're not gonna wanna incur interest in order to get to the, ultimately achieve the final goal of constructing the field, so, I, I would look at it as, essentially at the end, there's gonna be the several temporary borrowings, and typically it gets wrapped up into kind of one bond at the end of the project, and that's when, in my view, we would look to see what the, what amounts have been received for gifts or grants, what amounts have been allocated from the excess and deficiency fund, and that's when the final determination would be made as to the total borrowing, so, and, long story short, is I think at the end of the pro, at the end of the project, when the school district goes out to borrow, is my view as to when that amount would be determined.
Okay.
But, so that applies to the grants and gifts, but the motion has a very specific amount of one million, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the stabilization fund.
That, well, that's currently, that's language that we had proposed, it's still under review with their school district council, as well as the superintendent and finance director. The school superintendent indicated that the amount that is being allocated in this year's budget from the stable, from the stabilization fund, which is that excess and deficiency amount, and the amount of one point six nine million would be allocated for purposes of funding the turf field project, so, we had proposed including that in the motion, I'm not sure whether they are going to ultimately agree to it, but it will include language that does say specifically that the expenditure will be reduced by amounts allocated from excess and deficiency by the school district this year, as well as
Subsequent.
From time to time in future years, there's no obligation, of course, that they actually allocate money from excess and deficiency in future years, the, the hope is, of course, that they will to offset the amount that's gonna ultimately be borrowed, but it does recognize at least that they would have the ability to do so, and that if they do, any amount so allocated would be used to reduce the expenditure.
So, so when are we gonna know what the amount is that's gonna show up in the motion? Did they give you a?
We don't know.
They'll let you know Wednesday, or when are we gonna know?
The amount of the borrowing that is being sought is, for authorization, is fifteen million dollars.
No, I understand, is the motion gonna contain the amount, the exact amount of the stabilization fund transfer?
It currently has one point six nine.
It's, it's still under negotiation, John, with, with council at the district.
Right, that's my point, so, did you have like a drop dead date?
Well, town meeting.
You're gonna know when the number's gonna be, or no?
Well, I, I think we know what the number is already, because it's in the budget, which was included in, I think, Appendix C of the.
Yeah, but they have the, I think they have the discretion of how much they wanna put to this project versus other projects. So, the, the whole concern that we have is knowing in the meeting what the number is, and that's the, we, we pointed out sort of lack of clarity or confusion, so, it sounds like they're working on it, my question is, when are we gonna see the final warrant motion language?
I don't think the number's changing, John, why would the number change from what it is right now?
Well, because they have the discretion to change it.
But, but, no, it's our. In the talks we've had with Eric, they've, they've committed to that number, and it's held true for this amount of time.
I, I thought I heard it was still being negotiated.
Yeah.
No, just whether or not they have the number in the motion, it's in the, it's in their budget to use that money, they're gonna say that they're gonna use the money from the stabilization fund, they just aren't, haven't committed to saying that it's gonna be one point six nine eight million dollars from the stabilization fund.
It's, it's just the language, it's not the amount, if that makes sense, hopefully.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
Okay. Motion is made, seconded, any further discussion on favorable or unfavorable action? None seen, all those in favor of favorable action say aye. Wait, what, we're, we're discussing your motion for favorable action on the, this motion, or this article?
Real fast.
Yep.
John, you had, this came up a couple times, I, I had sent you in, Christina Yemel, there was a question about what is the per household projected, like assess, like what's this gonna cost people when it kicks in for payback?
So, that gets into the, it's hard to answer, because you don't know how much you're gonna borrow yet.
But assuming we borrow seven million dollars.
Right. Okay, that's something we can.
So, I mean, we were, I think the FinCom was gonna bring and deliver a handout on the table with some of that information, I think that's what we committed to.
But was.
I mean, I've done, I've done dozens of calculations, Caroline.
Four hundred.
We were gonna, we were gonna come together and prepare a best guess at what we think it could be under different scenarios.
I think, I think you're talking about, and I think this was John or?
Well, there was the building.
There was the one that was everything, it was a school building, it was a turf field, it was.
Yeah, that was, that was like.
It was everything. That was with the, that was with like the school, that was a hundred and twenty-five million dollars.
It was like eight thousand years, amazing.
Yeah, that's with all the cap, upcoming.
That was with the whole school's capital budget. You, you have to know what you're gonna borrow, you have to know what the interest rate is, and how, over how many years, and then. Right, it's all speculation. And then you know the tax rate, so it's, it's, but you, we give you a general number.
Wendy?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is, how quick?
Our plan was to bring something as a handout.
Is it possible to get a approximate number, say, before Wednesday, just 'cause we're gonna do a session talking with a bunch of people from the town, and they're gonna ask that very question, if we don't say, if we say, I don't know yet, and we just voted favorably to approve it, and we can't realistically say what the number is, like, I don't really feel comfortable doing that.
Yeah, I just, like.
I, I'll give, I'll give you some scenarios, how's that? I mean, if, if you feel comfortable using them, that's up to you. More than happy to do that, I mean, I've already done a couple buzzes.
The fact that it's borrowing, I mean, it says paid back over time, which means that it's
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get some.
Hard to come up with a number.
We'll get some numbers on the.
I can give you some scenarios, pretty easy to do.
Plug in interest rate and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask, I'll work with Wendy to ask our, our bond council to do a scenario for a seven million dollar borrowing over thirty years, or would the debt service be, we'll, we'll try to have that by, well, I'll do my best to try to have it by Wednesday, but we'll have it before town meeting.
That's a good idea.
Alright, so then I, I guess I'll back up a little bit. And I'm guessing that we have at least two members that aren't comfortable with voting favorable action tonight, am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah, I just, I feel like we need some kind of number, like, if you're saying like, oh, you know, you might have to pay an extra hundred dollars a year, but if we're like, you might have to pay an extra nine hundred dollars a year, we have an entire fixed income senior population that's like.
Yep, and just, in my, my two cents is I'm gonna vote no on this.
Okay.
Just, 'cause I don't need to think about it, I don't need the numbers, I don't agree with the scope of the project and the size of it, I think it should just be the multipurpose field in the tennis courts, and, and that's it, I don't think we need all the other turf fields and et cetera, it's too much for me.
I mean, if we wanna do it today to put it out there, we could just have two abstain.
We can meet half an hour before.
Yeah, I'd probably.
If it's gonna change anybody's mind, I don't know if it's gonna change anybody's mind, so I'd rather just get out there with it instead of wait until an hour before.
Yeah, I don't wanna do it morning, I'm just wondering, could you do two one zero, or two, two one two?
Well, let, let, let's pause a second, straw poll, abstain?
Abstain. Yes, in favor.
No?
Yes.
Yes?
Abstain.
So two abstains and no and two yeses.
That's what I'm saying, can we do a two one two?
It's a mess, but we can do it.
Are you abstaining just for right now, or even on?
I just don't.
John can run the math right now.
I'm abstaining, 'cause I mean, on Wednesday, we're gonna probably potentially, there's twenty people at least interested in attending our Zoom session to talk through the warrant, and if I say, I don't know what the numbers are, and I have twenty people that says, well, you voted on Monday that you were favorable, and I don't have anything to back that up, like, I can't keep a straight face there.
So, I, I would say we, we post the meeting half an hour before town meeting, hopefully we've got the information from bonding.
I feel particularly conflicted about the fact that the plan and the budget are, like, intertwined, and people, there's people that agree with the budget but disagree with the project plan, there's people that agree with the project plan and disagree with the budget, there's people that disagree with both, and I, I feel like, I'm kinda with you, like, the whole thing, I'm like, I don't really think this is the, the right whole, but I also don't wanna lay in front of a moving train that, like, has been on its way for ten years.
Yeah, and, and that's my thing, and it's, I, I, you know, I, I agree with the people with concern, and this is side, sidetracking us here, but with the PFAS concerns and stuff like that, but this project's been being talked about for ten years, and for the last two years, they've been working very diligently on it, and people are talking last minute, but that's often the case.
Yep.
It's just any true to the beast, because when it comes, comes time to put the rubber to the road, people start really talking.
So, I could be moved to a yes, depending on what the numbers say, but I mean, I'd have to see the numbers before I make any vote.
So let me say again, do we wanna wait until the morning of town meeting to take a vote on this, or we can take it right now, we know what we're gonna vote? Either way, it doesn't matter to me.
I'll leave, I'll leave it up to the abstaining ones to decide that.
I mean, I don't mind putting a two one two in there, unless people are embarrassed by that.
It's not, you're not putting it anywhere, the print, the warrant's printed, it's just gonna be what you'd say.
You're gonna stand until meeting ago, the select board voted two abstentions, one no, and two yeses on it.
I think that's, I think that's fair.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Alright, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed say nay? Nay? And abstentions? Two. Alright.
Well, so the motion carries for favorable action?
Yeah.
Yeah? And that's, that's what I thought.
Does it even at two?
Two, yeah. It's two to one.
Two to one.
Two to one.
Two to one. Great, see?
Way to go.
Way to go.
Sorry.
Okay, three dash one.
Three dash one, conservation amendment to the bylaw.
Tom is taking this one.
Tom, you fine with that?
Yeah, it's a nice short one, as opposed to the capital one, which I didn't read before I accepted. It's like four paragraphs.
Can you do it in a British accent?
Alright.
Three dash two is a consent.
Yeah, three dash two is a consent.
And it'll be Bill if it gets help.
Right, citizen, and then there's a citizens petitioned article is three dash three, did you wanna recognize the proponent of the article, or is there someone from the board who would?
Oh, no, it'll be.
You wanna, you.
He's very, he's very anxious.
Okay, I was gonna say, if you haven't reached out to him, reach out to him, I'm sure George would love to read the motion. Okay, so George will read that motion.
George.
Tar. Two Rs.
Two Rs.
Intar, not George.
Rubble, rubble.
Just to clarify. Alright, and then, anyway, we'll make the motion to adjourn, if it feels like it.
Somebody's gonna make the motion, because your, your motion, let's, let's go back to that one, the board and the FinCom both voted unfavorable action.
Yeah.
So, I would, I would propose that this requires a negative motion to be made.
Oh, man. No.
Which one are we talking now?
Three dash one, three dash three.
Three dash three, we've both said no.
Both the FinCom, both the FinCom and the select board voted unfavorable action.
Oh, yeah.
And so this would require an unfavorable action, a motion for unfavorable action, and would, I would urge that, well.
I don't think, it doesn't necessarily have to, I think certainly, you know, it can be stated after the motion is made, and assuming that there's a second for the motion, then the moderator could recognize, or somebody could clearly ask one of the, the moderator to have one of the select board members explain why they, what voted the way.
But you need to make a motion to, to move the question.
Correct, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a negative motion, in this case, they typically with citizens petitions, in most town meetings, the moderator recognizes Correct, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a negative motion. In this case, typically with citizens petitions, in most town meetings, the moderator recognizes the named individual who was the, kind of the first person on the petition, who usually is the proponent and the one who gathered the signatures. And that person would make the motion, but certainly can be stated that the select board and finance committee recommend against the article.
To play devil's advocate, like Joe, I agree and disagree with you at the same time, I guess. The negative motion is difficult because, as we know, people get so confused. Am I voting yes on this to say no?
It happened last time where I got confused. We got accused of.
I just worry that it's.
I'd frankly prefer to let the proponent make his case and then, in common, the selectmen can say why they oppose it.
Right, and I just, I mean, I agree that it probably should be a negative motion because none of us agree about it, but I think that it's just, it confuses people too much. What are you, what's the rest of your thoughts?
I prefer a vote whereby yes moves it forward and no kills it, so a positive motion.
Right. You folks over there?
What'd you say?
I prefer just the regular.
But who makes it?
Did George?
George.
Let George make, great, did George make the motion?
I also feel like.
We wouldn't make the recommendation because we, none of the boards agree with it, so we'll let George make it, and then we'll get recognized, one of us from.
Virginia wants to be recognized.
From FinCom or select board or both, and we'll say, "We don't agree with this."
I don't think we need to recognize anybody right now. This is not a discussion.
Well, yeah, so he doesn't have to recognize anyone, does he? We recognize him to make the motion.
Moderator recognize.
Right, right, but after, we're saying after that, once he makes the motion, we're saying recognize someone else.
I can go like this, "Mr. Moderator, will you recognize me to speak?" And then our moderator will graciously grant me that permission, hopefully, if I treat him nicely. But George gets to present his motion or not?
Yeah.
Yeah, he gets to present the motion. He does the motion and gets to talk about it for three minutes or whatever. Yeah. Whatever the time limit is. Has he asked you to speak to his motion?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I told him proponents generally get, I think I said five minutes.
That's just fine, yeah.
But, you know, so.
He gets to lead his case and then we get to contradict him.
And would you want the FinCom to also make an explanation of their vote?
Christina or John, would you guys be willing to say why you're in opposition of it as well?
I think we could. I'm not sure.
I mean, we can kind of do a decision too. We can, usually you can tell the flavor of the room, as we say.
This is, this will be the last item after.
Yeah.
I'm anticipating it will be a long morning.
17 years.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can kind of play it by ear, I think, right, so.
Virginia would like to be recognized.
Virginia, do you have something to add?
Simply that someone did mention the confusion that can occur when, maybe where you have to say no to make it yes or yes to make it no.
Yeah, I think we're going to, we're going to go with letting George present it as a yes vote and no squashes the article. We don't want to confuse people, like you said.
And that makes sense to, I think, easier to understand, and as someone else mentioned, it's the last one, I go, people are going to be anxious.
Yeah, people will be anxious and.
They want to go home, but I think it's reasonable to have them present it and have people have an easy time deciding the yes or no.
Caroline, John can check me on my math, but it's roughly about $150 per household per year with the, if we borrowed $7 million for a 20, a 20-year note. I didn't do 30, I did a 20-year, I think that's what it is, 20 years.
Yeah, the fields would be 10 years, not 20.
Okay, so it'd be double that.
It's probably 320.
By 300 then, yeah, a little more than 300, so double that. So the, to play devil's advocate here a little bit with our Joe suggestion of the. Joe's suggestion of changing the motion to a negative motion from one of our boards. There has been times in the past where it's a war of attrition at town meeting, and maybe everybody would have left, other than the folks really lobbying for this change, would stay, and it would pass against the better wishes of the FinCom and the select board. I don't think it makes a difference.
It's still a suggestion.
It's still, it's still people voting, and we're going to have a discussion to speak. It's still advisory. We got such bad, bad response, and we did negative motion last time.
Jamie still wakes up and.
Yeah, I wouldn't go there.
I go to the will of board, but I was strongly saying that was a bad idea last time, and I think. Right, and I think to what your point, Bill, was that it's advisory vote only. Then, you know, if they stay and it is voted through, it's up to select board's discretion to. If we make the negative motion and he gets to speak, he speaks last. If he makes a positive motion and then we tell why he should vote, then we speak last. So I think it's probably better to speak last in the negative sense, and this to confuse everybody. Okay. Who's paying attention. You swayed me back, okay.
Do people really just give a vote?
Only if someone calls, only if somebody calls.
Right, exactly. So if you could have literally three people in the room, and if nobody makes a quorum call, then the business can.
Yeah, we've had a couple of times where it's been a little bit dodgy under 75, and if no one calls it.
Yeah.
But if no one's called it, it has to be a verbal call, I think.
Somebody has to call because what's to say somebody just chose not to vote? Just because you have a quorum in the room doesn't mean everybody's going to vote on every article.
Well, also if the room clears.
Your members on the vote might not add up, even though you may have a quorum in the room.
Quorum vote, and then you can't vote on the final article.
Right.
Right, the only vote that could be taken after a quorum call is a vote to postpone town meeting to a date time place.
Reschedule it, right.
That's it.
Yeah, so if it clears out and there's not quorum, one of us does a quorum call.
Can't even adjourn, huh?
No.
You can just adjourn to a date time place.
You can temporarily adjourn.
Wednesday, June 14th.
You can't cancel it, you have to.
You could continue it to Wednesday, June 14th.
To Wednesday, June 14th. Yeah, so you have to do a quorum call to stop the vote.
Read the room.
Yeah.
We'll start begging people to stay if they get out.
We should tell them, we should tease some sort of like entertainment event, like, are you willing to sing a song?
Duke says they used to do a raffle.
A raffle?
Right? Karaoke after it. All right. Do a raffle. You used to do a 50-50 or something? You have to wait to, it's going to be there at the end to win. Fundraiser raffle.
Time for new business.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you've called it, "It's time for new business." Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
And please, before we get this scripted into town meeting, make sure it's a version that went to print with all the corrections that Caroline and I did with a different language, et cetera.
I'll get you the version of the warrant that we actually wanted to print it because there's a couple differences.
There's some typos and some language that changed.
Sorry about that.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you.
We'll blame Tom.
No, it's my fault.
Thank you. All right, have a good night.
Thank you, Tom. All right, so new business, town manager review document and timeline. We won't really talk about this too much since the late hour, but Caroline just emailed me, but I don't know if she emailed everybody else.
Well, I didn't know if the one that was in the packet was the final, final one, but I just, I sent you guys the final, final one.
Okay.
And it should be, it's ready for distribution.
Copy to me too?
I copied.
Yeah, it's you too. So we'll distribute that. Thank you, Mr. Bowler. Appreciate it.
And then we just need to, we had discussed setting a date before Jamie's departure, which may or may not work out now.
Yeah.
Given where things are, but.
So let's, if you could, folks individually look at that review document that Caroline just sent and see if there's anything that she and Tom missed, and then let me know, and then.
For context, that is a verbatim combination of our agreed upon, voted on.
Right.
Top priorities put into the matrix that we agreed upon.
Okay.
Right, but what was in the packet? So I'm showing it to Caroline.
What page, Jamie?
This isn't even part of it, right? 140, that, that's not even part of, that was the original thing that sprung.
The matrix.
But then the next thing on page 142, that, everything from there on out looks good to me.
And that's probably the same as hopefully Caroline just sent us, correct? Is that what you're saying, Jamie?
Yeah, I'm trying to look at what Caroline sent now.
I didn't send it to you. I sent it to Sean and to Joe.
Sure.
All right, let me just.
Do you want me to bring it up?
Yeah, and I'll send it to the board right now, so everybody has it.
It's on sheet two, though. Hold on, Tom, I might be. Because the one you sent me right now, hold on, we might have a version control issue. The one that you sent me, Tom, sheet one, says 2018, 2019. God damn it. Hold on.
Why can't I make this move?
Sorry, I'm looking.
He's got it on the screen.
Yeah, so go down to the bottom of this.
Party goals for fiscal 2022.
Yeah.
Keep going.
This is all correct, right? Tom Myers?
I think so, yeah. Wait a minute, Alex, right. But why does that? And that does look a lot different than what was in our packet.
Because I didn't have this when I was sending out packets. Caroline just sent this to me.
Well, technically, we both had it in January.
But I'm honestly wondering.
I resent it. Tom sent it to us in January when he, when we compiled it.
Okay, so let's go from the version that Caroline just sent to me that I just sent to all of you, and let's call that today's version.
Yeah, that was the last version, because that's what we did back in January.
Yeah.
We got together. And that's what I sent out, and then we haven't, it hasn't been touched since, what I know of.
Is that the same thing I just added a minute ago?
Does it look different in the packet because it's just the way it printed in the packet?
It's sheet two. For anybody who opens it, there's multiple sheets at the bottom. Sheet two is the one we're all referring to, I believe.
Yeah, I think you can probably just delete sheet one and sheet three because there's nothing on it.
That's right.
All right, so let's, let's talk about next steps then.
Do you need this up or no?
You can take it down, I think. I don't think we need it up. So we'll call the one that Caroline just sent current draft if it doesn't match the packet, and then where do we go from here, right?
Should we move to approve that or?
We already did.
We already proved it.
We already proved it.
That's right.
So in theory, that is a current version that was in January, right?
Yep.
So let's, let's talk timeline. We had talked about March, and now we're getting close to the end of March into April for this. What, what's our kind of end date? And I think we could, and if Jamie's open to it, we could, we could do this review, and Jamie could participate even though he's rolling off the board if it, if it carries over past.
What's the turnover date?
April 6 would be new member.
Yeah, but meeting on April 3rd.
And we got a meeting on the 3rd, which Jamie doesn't know if he's going to be at or not.
I'd say there's a good chance I will be there.
Okay.
And how does this work? Like, could you just do the 30-minute before the meeting executive session or does it have to be its own thing?
It's not supposed to be an executive session.
Oh, it's like an open.
It's all public.
It could just be an, it's just an agenda item.
That's the real fun part.
It's the real fun part.
Public flogging?
So typically, we've done kind of like individual interviews. You make up time with Joe, you go talk to him about all this stuff, you fill out your view, and then myself and/or Jamie compiles all the reviews into one kind of score and mashes the comments together, and then makes recommendations. Does that make sense to everybody? I mean, it's typical kind of review stuff.
We're going to do this before April 3rd?
Yeah, we're running out of time.
We're running out of time. So, you know, I guess the question is, is it feasible? And if it's, if it's not feasible, do we ask Jamie, are the kindness of his heart to, to participate in it as almost an exit interview kind of a thing?
Hire me as a consultant.
I mean, you can still just fill out the form before you leave, and you're a man of few words anyway. So I feel like if we could just capture your thoughts in writing, we may actually get more out of you. Your presence will be missed. I will, I will be pining, but.
So I mean, with that, if, if maybe we, we could jolt Jamie into getting something to us before his exit on April 6, and the rest of us maybe in the week or so after that, does that seem feasible? I mean, that gives us about a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm proud of it.
Great.
Okay. And then what, let's, well, let's pick a date. Let's not just be wishy-washy about it. Let's.
For the, and it, as a part of a regular meeting or a separate?
No, let's talk about getting them to me.
Oh, 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 that day.
So that I can work on compiling them, and I'll need about a week to compile them, so. Do you think by? If you got them to me by the 24th of April, that gives us a little over a month. Because I'm trying to think vacation and meeting time and stuff in there. I'm going away for vacation, which will be our next new business topic.
Everyone needs to do their taxes.
Everyone needs to do their taxes. So let's say, have them into me by the 24th, and then I'll work on compiling them, and then our, kind of our, hopefully maybe our first meeting in May. I'll have it compiled and we can do the review. Or publicly report the review.
I have a question for you on that. So. I, I wonder, the criteria of met, not met, is binary and is actually at the discretion first and foremost of Joe. And so I wonder if we don't first put this second section into a Google survey, and you can just go in through like, say, yes, did, no, didn't, and then put a comment in. And then that comes to us for us to make additional. I don't know why we would each meet with Joe to say like, "Did you meet the water treatment post-plan? Did you complete this task on the?"
Have them populate stuff before.
Yeah, like, can we first?
Self-evaluation.
Yeah, can I, can we first just put all these binary met, not met into a form and have you just fill it out? And then that goes to all of us, and we can make comments.
Yeah.
Individually on those task items and then put an overall assessment in there. I'm happy to put it in Google Docs if people are comfortable and that's legal.
Okay.
Let me, hold on, I'm not sure.
We, yeah, I was going to say, we might, part of that may work, but not all of it, yeah.
You all can't see each other's work.
Yeah.
That's okay. I can assign it to just when, to only have the answers go to either me or, I guess it would have to be Sean.
Okay, well, let's work on logistics of that.
Okay.
And we typically give Joe time to, if there's any concerns or needs improvement, we give him time to make comments back to us on it. On why this wasn't met or whatever blah blah, or what he's going to improve if there are areas for improvement. So, you know, the timeline extends a little bit from my report out.
Okay.
So let's, let's just hard and fast with by the 24th, you have it to me.
Yep.
The individual reviews.
And you want to discuss the second meeting date in April?
So we have a meeting scheduled for the 17th, I believe, of April, which is the Monday of April vacation. I will be in Florida out of touch that week.
I will likely also be in Myrtle Beach.
17th?
Yes, 17th is Monday, because 14th is Friday, 15th, 17th is Monday, and that's our regular scheduled meeting, so.
Cancel it or postpone it?
Well, you have, you could do an early meeting the week earlier because you'll have a new select board member that you'll want to come on, have him sworn in, and then reorganize the board. And it could be a very short agenda with that and maybe one or two other small things, recap at town meeting and, you know, I think I have one or two small things.
We could have another one on the 10th, just after the election, skip the 17th, and skip the 24th if we wanted to. And then into, into May the 1st.
Monday. I don't know if anybody cares that Monday, the 10th is Easter Monday. I don't even know what that means, but it's in my phone.
Easter Monday?
The holidays, the day before.
Well, when's Marathon Monday?
Patriots Day, which is.
17th, I think.
Seventeenth.
Yes, that's a holiday anyway.
Right.
Yep.
We could move the meeting to the 18th. I don't know if Sean will be back. I could probably participate remotely.
I don't even know if I'll be around remotely.
I am not, I'm not an observer of Easter Monday. I would defer to. No.
I'll be nobody.
He'll be home.
He'll be an observer.
Is the 10th okay for everybody?
Works for me.
I did hear a promise that would be short. Well, that was from Joe.
That was from Joe. I make the promises.
Who agenda set tonight? Was it you?
Joe.
There was a lot of stuff that you guys needed to get done tonight that couldn't really be put off.
Well, I'll tell you what, if, if I make Monday, the 10th, a long meeting, you can obviously vote me off the island because it's a reorganization of the executive.
No, no, we're keeping you right there.
We do need signatures before you guys leave.
We need you, but we're going to vote you off the island.
Uh, I move to adjourn or do I need to move to a meeting?
Is everyone fine with Monday, the 10th? We don't need to vote on it, but we can just say, yeah, okay, perfect. And then motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody wants to abstain or something?
Thank Wendy for staying, Wendy made it through the whole thing.
Thank you.
Through the whole thing. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Christina and Virginia.
Wendy, we'll talk tomorrow.
And anybody else.
We'll talk tomorrow, but thank you for Lockwood, all right?
Thank you.
So many people talking.